Didn't say that. All right, it's a beautiful day. Traffic is here. All right, one here. All right, it is now a little after 9:00 AM. Sorry, excuse me, it's a little after 9:00 AM. And we're gonna open this meeting. We'll start with a deep breath and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I bet you're gonna kill somebody at this chair when you get on. Fantastic, and now I'm... Make sure this is the right day. It is. We have implications. Commissioner Walter?
Well, I'm not connected to the internet right now, so I'm... I'm gonna pass at this point.
Mr. Chairman, being it's Memorial Day weekend's coming, I'd like to say a prayer and thank those who have served our country. Would that be appropriate?
I believe it would be.
Sure, let's bow. Almighty God, today we bow our heads and hearts in solemn remembrance. We honor the soldiers who gave their last full measure of devotion. And to the first responders who ran towards danger when others fled. They bore the weight of duty with courage and stood as guardians of life, liberty, and peace. May their sacrifice be never forgotten, not in our words, not in our lives, not in the legacy we leave. Comfort the hearts of the families who still feel the ache of absence. Heal those sacred in body and spirit. Let our gratitude be more than ceremony. Let it shape the way we serve, protect, and live with honor. Shelter those who continue to serve in uniform and on the front lines. Give them strength in the face of fear, clarity in crisis, and peace in knowing their labor is not in vain. In your mercy, hold them all in eternal light. Amen.
Amen. How about now, Commissioner Walter? All right. Well, then we will move along and then Bonnie, if you'll do a roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Henshaw?
I'm here.
Spence?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Seifert?
Here. All right, looking for our motion approval minutes?
Move to approve as presented.
Fire or sec. Commissioner Henshaw moved to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Spence, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you, the motion carries. Move on to first, public comment.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name and township or district. Providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and remain to county government as determined by the chairperson. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined remain a necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4 Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anyone like to speak at this time? Please go ahead to the podium.
Good morning. My name's Paul Dale. I live on 13th Street in Traverse City. I've been a contributor and volunteer at NORTA for over nine years. I've been reading this book called The Anxious Generation. And it outlines the epidemic of mental health issues such as isolation and depression brought about by the smartphone and other electronic devices. Phones isolate just when they are at greatest need for interaction and play. NORTA and the Civic Center are an antidote for mental health issues. Social learning is critical for children nine through 15. And play encourages social skills sharing, conflict resolution. The project I'm most proud of at NORTA was the creation of a skill track. The rollers and teeter totter over by the clubhouse. And I've seen hundreds of kids roll across those rollers and the teeter totter and fall off and cry and get back on. And you can't do that on a phone. So I'm here to ask you, when you deliberate the Project Alpha, that you consider the implications for the continued improvements to the Civic Center and to NORTA. The future of our children in Grand Traverse County is at stake. Thank you, and thank you for your work on the commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Sill. I am a Whitewater Township resident and a Grand Traverse County resident. I'm also the parent of three young adults that all grew up in this county and at the Civic Center. I'm also the Executive Director of NORTA Youth Cycling. I want to thank you for your continued work to build a vibrant, inclusive, and thriving community. I know a lot of your work is not visible to the community. There's a lot of deliberations and decision-making. But a lot of your work is visible, and we want to thank you for that. I'm here today to express my full support for Project Alpha and the relocation of the county maintenance building operations to LaFrenia Road. This move will improve efficiency and streamline a portion of the county operations. And as someone who is currently operating out of three buildings, I feel the dysfunction and inefficiencies daily. Consolidation is key. Moving forward with Project Alpha will also allow an obsolete maintenance building at the Civic Center to become a vibrant community space. This will build upon the improvements that are already in motion at the Civic Center, such as the repaving of the one-mile walking path, the new running track that aligns next to it, the bridge that just went in last week, and the new signage, which is absolutely incredible. And I know that's not just at the Civic Center, it's at all of the county parks, so well done on those. NORTA is poised and ready to transform the northwest corner of the Civic Center into a community bicycle education center. It'll be a hub for health, safety, and community connection. This space will feature a bicycle pump track, a safety skills course, and a consolidated education center to welcome summer bike campers. How's our community bike library, which now has over a thousand bicycles that are loaned to children ages two to 10 in our region? Offer mechanic classes, safety training, and so much more. A bicycle education center was written into the 2018 County Master Plan after significant community input and support. If schools weren't in session today, you'd likely hear directly from NORTA riders themselves. They'd be sharing how important the Civic Center is to them and what it feels like to arrive early for a summer camp in the summer, to ride the wooden rollers in front of the clubhouse, as Paul mentioned, and to learn to ride there, or to fix a bicycle. Or how they grew up in NORTA programs and are now finally old enough to be summer camp coaches, which is a big accomplishment. What they're really saying is this. The Civic Center and NORTA Youth Cycling have given them the confidence, friendships, and meaningful connections to their community. This is something that can't be replicated, and it's essential. The demand for our programs and impact are severely limited by our current spaces. Just two weeks ago, the county was awarded $992,084 through a RAP grant. Is that my three minutes? Thank you so much. Please move forward with Project Alpha.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rick Venner. I'm a Grand Traverse County resident. I'd like to start by thanking all of you for your sacrifice and the hard work you do every day to make us, make our community better. I'm a grandparent of seven kids in the Grand Traverse area. And five of them have been through the camp and either currently or have been through the camp, and I can tell you what the positive effect is. We all know the positive effect of physical exercise being outdoors. I think the mental health spoken to earlier. There's another aspect of this, and that is the interpersonal skills that these kids learn by not only interacting with each other, their peers, their coaches. I'm an occasional volunteer, and it's really fulfilling for me to interact with these young people. I like to think, based on the smiles that I see, that it's mutual. I'm also the Vice President of the Cherry Capital Cycling Club. We have 530 members. And I can tell you in a very real time that the impact that these NORTA students, past and present, have on their parents is fantastic. Everybody's learning to be better cyclists and more responsible cyclists in our community. The club has a grants program. We have two large bike tours that we make money from. And we like to give that money back to the community to help the biking community. And we feel strong enough about what NORTA does that we've granted them and for the Cherry Capital Cycling Club, this is a big deal, $6,800 this round of grants for buying more balance bikes that they can put into their library. So I would very much encourage you to pass or promote the Alpha project, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Richard Robbins. I am a resident of Traverse City and Grand Traverse County. I'm here representing a group that at some point here in the near future I'd like to introduce to you. It's called the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. This alliance represents literally hundreds of active households here in Grand Traverse County. The alliance consists of TART Trails, NORTA, the Cherry Capital Cycling Club, the Disability Network of Northern Michigan, Groundwork, the TC Track Club, the Citizens Climate Lobby, League of Michigan Bicyclists, and a company called Streetcraft. We have quite a momentum to help to promote non-motorized or what we call multimodal transportation networks within the city, the county, and as we grow our influence to the five-county region. We see NORTA and their initiatives as being the ground-up building blocks of a safe, responsible community of cyclists and citizens, frankly, of our county. So I'm here as the representative of the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance to promote and to advocate for the approval of Project Alpha for NORTA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Abby Kaufman. I'm proud to have been born and raised here in Traverse City and to have returned here to Traverse City. I'm NORTA Youth Cycling School Coordinator and also am a certified elementary and special education teacher. So I'm here advocating on behalf of our friends with disabilities who participate in NORTA's programs. NORTA has a really neat program called Bikes for All. And during Bikes for All, we connect our riders who have disabilities alongside really caring volunteers. We build relationships, we teach safe cycling skills, and we bring the joy. We show all of our friends that they too can access physical activities outside and experience the joy that comes with that. Currently, we can have upwards of 40 people with disabilities attending our Bikes for All events throughout the week. It is a party, and I would love to have any of you come to it. However, at this time, the space that is dedicated for us to use on the south side of the Civic Center does not adequately meet their needs. There is one single handicap parking spot. And that parking spot does not have a side lift that can be accessed for people who have an adaptive system in their van. We also have bathrooms there that are not able to be used by many of our participants because they are not handicap accessible and up to date. Our riders and our participants may have to navigate dirt and grass or a very busy parking lot in order to access where we are meeting. It's a very tricky situation. It does not prioritize their safety, and it does not give our community members what they deserve. If Project Alpha moves forward and we are able to use amazing donations and grant funding to access what is currently being used by the county to store facilities management and different supplies like that, we would have the opportunity and the great honor of creating a space that is truly meant for everyone. We could create a space with accessible bathrooms, with more handicap parking spaces, a space where our riders with disabilities are able to safely practice their biking skills. It is so important for our community members to all have access to our county parks, to have safe access, adaptive access, and universal access. I also am proud to be a sister of a person with a disability. My family decided to go for a bike ride on Mother's Day using an adaptive bike that we have called a duet. My sister is not able to pedal or steer on her own, but with the support of a person behind her, she can experience that joy. The day we showed up, the parking spot was taken. So my family had to quickly navigate the parking lot, get my sister out into her wheelchair, park a car, run back to load her into the duet bike, and then run back to the car with her wheelchair. And that was on a Sunday. That wasn't even one of our days where 40 people are in attendance. Delaying Project Alpha would be detrimental to people with disabilities in our community. We encourage you to think carefully about the incredible opportunity at hand. Thank you. We fully support Project Alpha.
Thank you.
All right. So my name is Connor Miller. I'm a Garfield Township resident. And I also am employed with Aspire North Rail Tours, which is located in the city of Traverse City. So I would just like to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you to the Grand Traverse County Health Department for the incorporation of many of our requested amendments to the Grand Traverse Regulation for the evaluation of onsite water and sewage disposal systems at the time of property transfer. We are very thankful for these amendments that will support effectiveness and compliance with this regulation. I would just like to note a few remaining items in the regulation that may benefit from some additional clarity for your consideration today. So these items include timeframes in which the Health Department's certification of an evaluation report may be completed, as well as a timeframe for the Health Department's review of corrective action plans. We understand that the workload of evaluations will vary throughout the year, so a specific timeframe may be difficult to land on. However, our concern is for homeowners who, under the current violation policy, it appears, will be required to act immediately to rectify any violation or face repeat and escalating fines. We understand that homeowners may experience their own extenuating circumstances and as the Health Department may also experience. And we request some leniency for homeowners who act in good faith to rectify violations in a timely manner. We also continue to request the considered allowance of financing options for onsite wastewater and sewage disposal system repairs to support the ability of our county's most vulnerable to afford to repair their systems. And then third, we believe that the regulation could benefit from some additional points of clarification, specifically on how proof of a corrective action plan may be provided to Health Department officials and a definition for the term of an area of known water quality concern. So one last thing, I'd just like to stress the continued importance of identifying properties that would be affected by this proposed regulation through mapping and a database, identifying all properties located within 300 feet of surface water. We are looking forward to continuing our work with both Grand Traverse County Health Department and the Grand Traverse County Commission in the coming months on the regulation guidelines to incorporate this type of information. We continue to be very appreciative of both your receptiveness and responsiveness to our feedback, so thank you, thank you. And we continue to look forward to working with you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here, my name is Jill Pryor. I am here as a Garfield Township resident and as the Director of Development at NORTA Youth Cycling for full support of moving forward with Project Alpha. As Jill Sill mentioned earlier, just two weeks ago, the county was awarded almost $1 million of a RAP grant from the Michigan State Government. Of that, $475,000 is designated for NORTA's pump track. And the rest will fund new ADA accessible restrooms, as Abby mentioned, and a maintenance shed near the new playground. If Project Alpha doesn't move forward, I'm concerned that there is a risk of losing nearly $1 million in funding and critical momentum for this project. Infrastructure is more than roads and buildings. It reflects our values and supports our economy. Like the library, the TART Trail, and Clinch Park, this project will become part of what makes Grand Traverse County a great place to live, work, and visit. Every home listing near the TART mentions the proximity. It's a selling point and an economic driver for our region. The Civic Center has an opportunity to create a similar draw. At NORTA, our mission is to build happy, healthy, strong communities. With your continued support, we have the opportunity, momentum, and funding to bring this vision to life by transforming an outdated facility into a vibrant, inclusive space for the entire community. I recognize that there are many layers and variables to consolidating county services on LaFrenia Road. That being said, I urge you to move forward with the first phase, Project Alpha. Thank you for your steady work on behalf of the residents of Grand Traverse County. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Going once, going twice. Thank you, everyone who spoke today. Let's move on. Got to get to where I'm at. All right, the approval of the agenda. So I have an agenda item I would like to add. So I make the motion we approve the agenda as presented with the addition under New Business, 11A Beta Board Appointments.
Second?
I have a second. Commissioner Andrews, any discussion? Or additions?
Where's the senator pack at the Beta Board?
It is not. I'm adding it.
Okay. Oh, it's not, you don't have the names down. This is just adding it.
Yes. Well, it's the topic, so. It sounds a little more ominous than what it really is.
I thought we were appointing somebody. I was like, wait, what happened? Gotcha. I'm good.
All right. Is everybody good with that? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay? Fantastic. We're gonna move to the Consent Calendar. Bonnie?
The purpose of the Consent Calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the Consent Calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the Consent Calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval is approved by a single commission action adopting the Consent Calendar. A, receive. Number one, Grand Traverse Conservation District, April 2025 report. Number two, expenditure report. Number three, ARPA status report. Number four, Board of Public Works, April 2025 meeting minutes. B, approvals. Number one, ARPA funding reimbursement requests. Number two, Health Department Medical Director Services Agreement. Number three, Health Department Updates to the Adolescent Health Clinics. Number four, Central Dispatch Annual 911 Surcharge Rate Approval. Number five, Updates to Grand Traverse County Parks and Recreation Park Rules. Number six, 2025 Budget Amendments. Number seven, 86 District Court and Circuit Court Memorandum of Understanding Foyer Requests.
I believe that you missed one there, Bonnie. There's supposed to be under Receive, A5, a memo from Administrator Alger.
It got updated again, didn't it?
We try to limit that as much as we possibly can.
A, receive. Number five, Alger Memo.
All right, thank you. Anybody like to pull anything from the Consent Calendar? Holy cow, we're buying lottery tickets today.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the Consent Calendar as presented.
Second?
Fantastic. Mr. Henshaw moves we accept as presented with support from Mr. McAllister. This will be a roll call vote.
Andrews?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. Passes. Thank you, everyone. I'm getting there, Rob. I'm getting there. So we're gonna go on to Special Lawyers of Business, 7A, Project Alpha Progress Update.
So I'll just make an announcement in the lines of Mr. Alger's memo I learned last night. I didn't realize we were, the connection that this was turning into a vote on NORTA. My son Franklin Andrews was offered a job at NORTA. He will be a summer coach at NORTA this summer. I just want to make that disclosure for the record since we're having a discussion about NORTA's role at the county as a user of that facility, for the record.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Congratulations to your son.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Tomzak and Bobby Popinski are here today to provide you an update with Project Alpha.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll briefly go through a summary of Project Alpha. We're completed to date. If you'll recall, last month, we reviewed with the board the schematic design budget estimates for both the EOC 911 and the central storage facility. We reviewed the schematic design budget in quite detail, including the some specifications. And then they deferred for a month because you wanted some time to review all of the information. We had also a subcommittee meeting with a few members of the board regarding the floor plan design for the EOC. If you recall, a few months back, it was about 15,500 square feet for the building. There was concerns it was too big. We reduced that square footage in a later design to a 13,300 square foot. And then we bumped it up, and you'll see it in your package, after our last review with the Board of Commissioners to add back in a few items for the EOC, which included a wellness room, a few offices for future use, showers, and the lobby. We bumped it up about 1,000 square foot to 14,300 square feet. And I'll go through kind of a recap on budget after we go through the overview. The central storage facility, we also discussed at a previous meeting the potential of reducing the rough slope and encapsulating a little bit more of the pre-engineered building to reduce cost. And we obviously continue to have our biweekly meetings with the Project Alpha Subcommittee members. Any questions regarding where we're completed to date?
Right here. We're looking for the wellness room, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, it's real small on the print, but the second page, you'll see it. It's just to the left of the 911. Towards that bottom right there.
It was small, I could hardly see it.
Right.
Maybe can somebody bring it up on the screen so other people can see it?
Please.
I don't know if I could do it from here or not.
No, it says 80 square feet.
I had to zoom in.
It's bigger than your first office. Come on.
Nate, will it show up on here, on the laptop here at the podium?
Parents tell you that watched pots don't boil any faster.
No pressure, Nate. You're doing well.
While he's getting that file pulled up, if I could go to the upcoming work that we've got planned for this month and
Please do.
Into June. So we prepared some reduced costs associated with the change in the rough slope for the CSF. It's not significant, but it's still a savings. We're looking at around a $60,000 to $70,000 deduct if we were to change that. The next phase of development, we're gonna ask for your approval to proceed with the Design Detail, which is the DD. And then the costs associated if we move forward with both buildings for the DD design would be approximately a $200,000 fee to PIA. And now we've got the plans up.
You want the one on the second page? Is that the one that's the 14?
Three of seven, yes. Doesn't have any color.
Yeah, you won't want to look at that plan then, Nate, if you want to go back.
It's black and white.
One, there.
That one.
Yep, and you'll see over there, it's just Yep, and you'll see over there, it's just beyond to the left of the lockers for the 911.
I'm gonna put up the...
For the wellness. And then the, you'll see two references to future offices, one for EOC, the other one's for the 911. And then we provided for the lobby. Now, this floor plan, by the way, changes the design a bit. Remember, we discussed going to a flat roof design. By doing so, PIA suggested maybe going with a circular design to the entry. Some of it is actually associated with making it tornado-proof. So, that's one of the reasons why you'll see that circular design to the entries.
Have you completely abandoned the 15, 5 square foot?
Yes.
So, that's off, off now?
Correct. Yep. But we did bump it up, which is on this plan now at 14, 3.
I'm just, I'm looking at that one on my screen to try to see all that changed.
Mm-hmm.
Like one of those spot the difference quizzes they used to...
So, the wellness room, the two added offices, the shower, shower facilities, and the lobby. So, those expansions added up to roughly 1,000 square foot.
And the multipurpose room is still not a part of it.
Correct. We do still have the larger conference room to the far right.
Yeah.
That never...
Oh. What do you mean by the circular entrance? I can see it on the, is that gonna be covered like that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be a covered entry, yes. But what, what it helps with is the potential if there was a windstorm or a tornado, it helps to protect that front entry. So, they needed to rate the entry just like the structure for 200 mile per hour winds, and suggested this would be the most economical and effective way to do that.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Am I missing it? I don't see an exterior perspective on that circular entrance. How would it have its own roof?
Yes, it would have its own roof. It would still be similar to the flat roof design for the 911 EOC, but it isn't in the package.
Okay.
It's the floor plan that was included.
Is it, um, it seems like that circular shape is really unusual. I, I can't remember walking into a modern new construction with a circular room. Is, are there windows in there?
There wouldn't be windows in the walls themselves. The doors would still have some window, some glass to it. Yep. Then we could provide you certainly with an elevation from PIA.
Mr. Alger, could you move it up just a little bit? I want to see the, the other way. I want to see the, okay, thank you. I'm just...
Jerry, the only showers that have been added are the ones in the front, correct? There aren't any in the back specifically for 911 staff usage?
Correct. It would be just on the bottom side for both men's and women's larger bathrooms. And again, the whole intent was because these employees would be there for an extended period of time in the event of an emergency.
Gives me some security pauses, but...
So, on page 14 of 17, it shows a schematic of what it would look like in three dimension. When we, and I understand that we're gonna have a couple more meetings about this, is it possible to get renderings of this circular? I'm just wondering how the circular is gonna tie in with the slanted semi-flatter roof.
Right. So, Ms. Spence, the, that particular page on 14 was the original sloped roof design. We include it just for reference for you. That is not the intent of this redesign. The redesign is strictly a flat roof design. It would still provide for all of the floor plan layouts that you see, and it saves roughly 1.1 million dollars.
Yeah. Because I, I know there's a lot of urgency to get shovels in the ground. I sit on the 911 committee, and I can feel it, that we want to move forward with this. So, I don't want to like pick at stuff. I'm just curious. I'd love to see a schematic or a rendering of what this is gonna look like.
Absolutely.
Just for my own personal satisfaction.
And you'll have certainly the opportunity to look at the redesign, including the rendering. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, you moved the Directors and the Assistant Directors Office into more of the corner in the, that's the wrong term, but like in the footprint of the building where before, on the 13, 3, it was kind of sticking out to the side. That probably brings with it some cost savings from the standpoint that you had turns, one, two, three, four, five, six turns in walls, and it kind of brings it inside of the building, especially with this being a hardened building, that probably, probably makes more sense, so...
It does. Anytime you can reduce the amount of linear footage of exterior wall, you're going to save money. So, that's the EOC. And then, you'll see on the pages that follow the CSF building, and they did provide for the roof design for that, the elevation, the lower pitch slope to that roof.
Can you give a page reference with that?
Sure. If you look at page six, it shows some elevations, and page seven for the CSF redesign. I believe I referenced that about a month ago, the idea that if we did change that roof pitch, try to use more of the pre-engineered building versus conventional steel frame, it does provide for savings. Certainly with this redesign, we do have to add some additional columns, some foundations, but it's still gonna save money. And I think, personally speaking, it's a better look of the elevation for that particular type of building. We did accommodate to changes in the overhead doors, so we've got those. Any questions regarding the design?
Are there any things that you'd still like to see that we're not asking about or that you would like to bring up?
No, I'd like to just reference that. We did spend a quarter and a quarter of time, PIA did, we did with staff to review the programming side of it. You'll recall a few meetings ago. It's interesting to know that when we took the DPW building out of this for the CSF, we reduced that square footage to what you see now on the page, which is 37,600 square foot. We have discussed it with the department heads. They're comfortable with that particular design. It also associates pretty closely with the FMP study that Tower Pinkster did. I think they might have been at 52,000 square foot if they included the DPW.
53, Jerry.
53. So, we're, we're pretty close. And we did validate all of this. A lot of meetings were held. You'll recall seeing the programming side of the report that was prepared by PIA.
Just one quick clarification there. And Jerry made the point, Bobby Pepulinski also with Cunningham Whip, when he said DPW, when the FMP was done, DPW was part of that, and that's why it was at 53,000 square feet. As we went through the process and DPW became not part of the CSF building, we reduced the square footage by about 18,000 square feet. So, that's what he's saying. It's comparable. When you were to add DPW back in, it ended up being pretty comparable to what the FMP study resulted in. But we went through the process independently, went through a six-month process of interviewing all the department heads, talking with everybody, measuring the size of the equipment that would be stored within the building, all to determine exactly the amount of square footage that each department and group needed, as well as for their planned expansion for things like Commission on Aging, to be able to plan for the future. And 37,000 square feet ended up being the size of the building that they need now, as well as for steps into the future.
Thank you, Bobby.
Commissioner Walter.
Maybe you're gonna get to this. I don't know. Do you have more you want to share before you take questions, or how do you want to do this?
If you'd like, I could go through a quick recap of the budget that we reviewed about a month ago, just so that everybody's up to speed. So, on page 16 of 17 of the report, it shows what we looked at last month for the schematic design budget estimate. So, at that time, the central storage facility was at the 37,600 square foot. We were estimating a range for schematic design budget of between 12.4 million to 13.7 million. And if we take the deduct for the change in the sloped roof of roughly 60 or 70,000, you're still within that, that 12.4 to 13.7. For the EOC, the budget estimate was based on a 37,300 square foot building, and that was between 14.6 and 16.2, let's say, for the budget range. Then we provided for those green energy options, which I won't go into the details, but you see it there, those three that were listed. And then we offered some value engineering alternates, a credit for doing that flat roof design, which we say is about 1.1 to 1.25 deduct. And taking, instead of doing the concrete bollards for the EOC, we could take and use just boulders. We could save 20 to 25,000 there. And then, at that point, we talked about adding back in roughly 1,500 square foot for the EOC. That was between 750 to a million dollar add. But we're talking about only adding 1,000 square foot, so I'm estimating that to be about a half million dollar add. And then if we decide to do that well back up with fire pump and water storage, in the event there was concerns that the public water wasn't going to be available, that was an add of between 250 and 300,000. So, that's kind of a recap of where we're at to date. So, if you were to say the EOC building, adding that 500,000 back in, deducting for that flat roof design, you're at around 14 million, plus adding any ancillary costs for items noted. And then, the central storage really doesn't change that much. You're still at between 12.4 and 13.7, based on the 37,600 square foot.
How do you calculate the DD, the 200,000? Is that on a per square, square foot? Is there sunk cost combined with per project?
You're talking about for the DD design that PIA would do?
Yes, since PIA estimates 200, 200,000 in nine weeks.
So, Ms. Andrews, in the original proposal that PIA is under contract with, they separated out the schematic design versus the DD versus the construction documents. And then they just note what the estimated amounts for that work is.
So, if we were to proceed today with the EOC and pause on the CSF, would that 200,000 be the same, or would there be a savings? How does that work?
There would be a savings.
Okay.
If I was to estimate, it's probably a little over 100,000. I don't think you'd take it equal for equal, because the CSF building's not as complicated in architectural design as the...
So, it's probably proportionately less of that total spend?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
Commissioner Nelson.
Have you done any of the green energy options payoff timelines at all to give us information on whether that makes fiscal sense?
No, sir. But we will provide for it at the future meetings.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Walter.
That was my question, too. When can we expect that information? At the last meeting, we had requested that for consideration, and part of the reason we were looking at possibly going for the flat roof was to allow for a green roof?
Mm-hmm. That's correct. Yep. So, we will provide for it, the estimated break even for the, for a return on investment for those items at the next meeting.
Kind of waiting to see what, what building we're looking at first, right?
Yes, right.
Footprint.
Again, you can also use green energy on the ground, solar panels. The green roof, again, this building, as I mentioned before, although it's fairly, eyes, it's around that 13,600 square feet, or in this case, if we move it to that added cost, well, I'm sorry, 14,300 square feet, you'll get a, with the green roof, you get some energy savings. More importantly, it reduces some of the stormwater requirements. Now, as noted at last month's meeting, stormwater is not that significant for that size of a building for two reasons. First of all, we've got available land. We were going to propose that it was an onsite detention pond, and you have sandy soils, which allows that water to infiltrate faster into the ground. So, the size of the pond won't be that large, but green roof is great. It's always a great option to consider. We do have a precast panel proposed for that roof. Remember, with the tornado shelter requirements, we have to do that. Not a lot of energy savings associated, but it's nice to be able to provide for the green roof if we can. It might not be there in the event of a tornado, but the roof will remain.
Anyone else for Commissioner Andrews? Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, so the, the part that gives me pause is on page 17, the last page of the packet, where there's a campus schematic that shows basically a site plan for the whole campus, and shown on there is a future jail. And I, I appreciate that the, the FMP shows a jail there. There's also a future juvenile detention facility. At this point, I'm not confident, I have a low confidence, that a jail we build would end up being an, out of the county seat, which is in Traverse City. But I'm only one of nine commissioners. What concerns me is what happens on the rest of that campus, and how what happens on the rest of that campus impacts, in particular, what happens at the storage facility in terms of if we move, as we discussed last week, if there were consensus to move Commission on Aging, Administration, IT, HR, MSU Extension, consolidation is key, right? If we were to consolidate those county offices on this campus, I expect that they would probably end up in that area where the jail is contemplated, or somewhere on that southern side of the parcel. I'm not sure, in particular with respect to the storage facility, if it would be the same building if all of those entities were on the same campus. It might be. It might be exactly the same as is proposed, but this building was not designed anticipating at least five or six other major county departments being on the same campus in terms of, there may be more administrative space. It looks like it's about a third of the, the current layout is administrative space, offices and such, Commission on Aging and otherwise. It might be more. It might be less. That might be over in the new building, some of those offices. Maybe there would be more in that building if Commission on Aging had that as its headquarters. We might need more parking if MSU and other entities are moving their, the trucks in the parking lot and elsewhere onto that campus. To the extent I have pause, it's not whether we should move facilities from a civic center to Lefranea, it's how. How do we do it, and how do we do it wisely so we have no regrets in this design? That's where I'm coming from, sitting here today. And the fact that Nortay apparently received a grant for $400,000 is, that it may be tied up with today's decision. I don't know that that's the case. I have not seen the grant. I have no idea what the timeline for the grant application is. I have no idea, you know, what, I didn't see the grant. I didn't see the application, and I certainly haven't, we haven't had a chance to vote on this today. But I have, I am concerned that, as designed, I, I can't assure my, the people who are paying for this building, that this is the building we would build when we consolidate. That's my concern.
So, is there somebody, can Matt give us some clarification on the grant that they received as far as if the decision slows their process down, or can somebody give us a ruling, or some advice on that?
John Chase, can you talk to the grant?
Good morning. John Chase, Parks and Facilities Director for Grand Travers County. So, yes, we received a MEDC RAP grant, so revitalization and placemaking grant of $992,000, and that is for improvements at the property. So, it includes building of a pump track. It includes, trying to think of the second thing. Yeah, the restroom facility. What was the third thing? Yeah, okay. I thought there was a third thing, too. Yeah, storage in the restrooms.
Monument signs, John?
Monument signs. There you go. Thank you. Thank you. I knew there was a third thing. I just couldn't recall what that was. So, those three things are the, are the combination. So, while the grant requirements don't require this to happen right now, if we, if we don't move forward with the project, that creates a, creates a change in the, in the momentum for the project. So, one of the things that, we wanted to be able to build that, build out that south building. So, the south building right now is currently the home to restrooms, and it's currently the home to Nortay's clubhouse facility. And what we'd like to be able to do is, if, if we move the facilities shop out of the park property, return that to a more park-appropriate use, that then gives us the opportunity to then remodel that south building and take those restrooms that are not our most shining moment and rebuild those restrooms into something that would be more appropriate, and then also add a two-bay garage on the back. So, what would slow the process down is if we were not able to move the facilities team out of that building, that then changes the dynamics of the rest of the projects, including the pump track and the south building.
What's the timeline on the grant?
Timeline on the grant, so we have to complete everything. There's, there's two different stages. So, there's some milestones that have to be completed by December of 2026, and a couple that have to be completed... So there's some milestones that have to be completed by December of 2026, and a couple that have to be completed by December of 2027. So I would, Maxwell's not here at the moment. He would have the better handle on those specific items. But December 2026 is when we have to hit the first milestones.
Any more questions for Mr. Chase? Commissioner Walter?
Not a question for Mr. Chase, so I'll wait till he's done. If somebody has a follow-up question. I just had a comment about Commission on Aging.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you.
Just to clarify again, this is in reference to Commissioner Andrews' thoughts or concerns about the central storage facility and the Commission on Aging piece of that. And maybe Commission on Aging is here, she can speak to that as well. But what is proposed to be there is a very different aspect of Commission on Aging than the other part of Commission on Aging. I don't know that they've ever been together in the same building, nor do they. It's very, very different services, you know, related to outdoor services. And then the other pieces of Commission on Aging, which someday may be out there in a, in a facility with maybe other aging services. Those are very different services in how they're delivered. The, we wouldn't anticipate there would be clients coming to the facility where the storage is, right? These are out, people who perform outdoor services for clients out in the field. They help to remove snow and, you know, provide other services for those who are aging independently in their homes. And so that's very different than the vision for potentially down the road, a shared facility for the rest of Commission on Aging. So that all being said, I don't have concerns about this facility being adequate for a possible addition of Commission on Aging to this property as it's, this is more of storage and facilitation of the work that they do related to facilities. And maybe, I don't know. If you want to speak to that as well, you're welcome to come up.
Lana Payne, Director of the Commission on Aging for Grand Traverse County. So that pretty much describes it. I think we did talk about it too at the last commission meeting. So it is strictly outdoor services. And we have never been co-located. So we now just have facilities that aren't large enough to grow our program. They're really very outdated, because they include the old animal control building. And so we can't grow that program unless we have a different facility. We have seven workers. We're completely full. We can't add more trucks or equipment. We typically have at least two hundred people on the waitlist for each outdoor service every time we come around to that season. And so until we have a different facility, we really can't attack those waitlists and give people services, so. But it is strictly outdoor services only that would be moving there at this time.
Mr. Spence?
Yeah, I wanted to illustrate for anyone listening in that when I looked at the plans for the Commission on Aging proposed building, it was like a space for about forty lawn mowers, you know, the push lawn mowers and that kind of outdoor equipment, just in case someone needs to have a visual of what that means. So thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner Walters.
It's planned for ten staff. And so that means we have ten commercial mowers plus a spare. So it's basically eleven of everything. So eleven commercial mowers, eleven spots to store plows, eleven spots to store, to store leaf blowers and leaf removal equipment, push mowers, all of the equipment that we use. So eleven of everything.
Yeah, I remember seeing that on the plan, so I appreciate that.
Commissioner Flynn?
Um, I want to say or reiterate what I've already heard here. I don't think it's, discussing the facilities is definitely not, not moving it to Lefranier. That definitely is something I think most of us are in agree, agreement in. But I do, after a meeting with the city last week, how do we see that campus? And is this large enough for what we need out there? Not ju, I mean, I totally understand Commission on Aging is all set and will have an office out there later, at a later date. But is this large enough for what we're going to need out there in the future if that's what we choose to do? I guess that's what I kind of envision what administration sees.
So maybe it's a question for administration. If we consolidated this, everything in the county other than law enforcement, so what's in this building, Commission on Aging's staff areas, MSU extension, onto this campus, is this the same building we would build for facilities and storage?
Potentially. This building was designed with future growth in mind. Could there, in the event that, say, senior center network came along with us, and we had a senior services building or a senior services department within the governmental center that's contemplated to be there? You know, they have storage requirements. We experienced that when we moved. We had to have a con, a conco trailer, whatever they're called, to store some of that, those items in it. But largely, we believe that this is what is required in terms of storage capacity for the future.
How far into the future are you looking? Or are we projecting? Do we have a, like a timeframe?
So this is, again, after the meeting we had with the city, we had agenda setting last Friday, and we just, that's the momentum that we saw from our joint meeting is what we need to have. We need to have a discussion about what is this going to look like as a total project? Where is the governmental center going to be? Where, where are we going to be co-located with the city? Where are we going to be just by ourselves? So truly, it is a first, real good look at what that campus looks like. And I think that an exploration of that would be very valuable.
Well, I, I agree that it's a, it's a when, not an if, kind of going through this process. I like where we're at with the nine-one-one building. I'm afraid, I hate building stuff twice. I don't think the building's big enough. When I'm talking about the building big enough, I mean the storage facility, and I could be wrong. But as we sat around, we talked about the nine-one-one center here a couple of weeks ago, or four weeks ago, whatever it was. And we talked about, we're looking at a fifty-year build. I look at the services that this county provides, its constituents, or its taxpayers, and the people who live here. And I look at that building, and that's not a fifty-year build building, in my opinion. And I could be wrong. I'd hate to build a building, then we pack it full of stuff in a year, and then now we're going to spend a few million dollars more to make it bigger. I don't think it should be smaller. I can't believe I'm saying this. I think it should be bigger. And I would like to do a deeper dive on that. But having said that, I don't think that we should delay the nine-one-one building any further. So I'm going to make the motion, and we go ahead with the design development for the nine-one-one better, uh, nine-one-one center right now.
No support?
I have a question for Mr. Forsyth and Mr. Elder, or Bobby, Jerry. It's my understanding that if we only build the nine-one-one center at this time, that the whole driveway to the nine-one-one center is fundable by nine-one-one surcharge.
That's correct.
So we are having a savings, at least from the taxpayers.
Right.
Are you clear as mud, Bonnie?
Yes. Moved by you, seconded by McAllister to move forward with the design.
Commissioner Henchel?
Henchel.
Oh, Henchel.
I'm sure it was McAllister.
Y'all sound alike.
I did want to say something though. It's like, what, what Nate has said is the collaboration between the city and the county is, is nice, and we don't really want to slow the roll. I feel the same thing. I had a nice conversation with Jill Sill yesterday, and the same with the Nortay and the track and everything that's going on at the center. They, they don't want to slow their roll either. So they want to make sure that they have good momentum and a positive vibe going and helping the county and the community in ways that probably we don't actually all know. So on that part of it, I, I think as a group, we shouldn't slow anything up on that. Same with the city, or same with those guys. But I don't know what that is. So as John talked, they got a year and a half to do their first thing. Is that long enough? If we make this decision today, is that going to give them enough leg time to get it started and hit their first mark? I didn't, I didn't get that out of that, what John had said. So I would like to make sure that that's part of it. I don't, I'm not saying part of your motion, but I'd like to make sure that they can get, get what they need as far as that part goes in the timeframe. I'd hate to give back a million dollars to anybody.
Oh, I'm not giving it back. We're not giving it back. We're not giving it back. We're, we're, just like we got our meeting with the city last week, or whatever. It's like, it's going to be for a few of us, we're going to have a few more meetings to keep that motion going. This is not a, hey, we're not going to vote on it today, it's going to die. This is like, hey, let's do it right, but we have a timeframe. Not only a limit for the grants, but also for the fine people that use that facility. Plus, we have all the other folks that work for the county that are looking for direction from us. Where are they going to be? I've worked for lots of companies that were going to, hey, do I work in this building this week or that building next week? And it creates tension that's unnecessary. And we also owe it to the taxpayers, which is who we're here to represent in the first place, to do our due diligence. But to move ahead and not languish and make it ten times more expensive in five years from now, because we're going to kick it off to the next four-year term of board members, so.
So can we make a timeframe that works for, for all of us and say we're on that, that agenda or that timeframe? So it all works?
Well, we got a motion on the floor first. Let's vote on that.
Call the vote on the EOC building, so we can at least segregate this conversation.
We'll do a roll call vote, Bonnie, if you would please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Pence?
Yes.
Walter?
No.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. So now let's go back to what you were saying, Commissioner McAllister, about a timeframe. What are you thinking? Oh, gentlemen?
I, I need to hear from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we can, real quick, timeframe wise, what's important to consider here is we're, we're pursuing two projects that can have savings by them moving forward together.
Thank you.
So there can be a timeframe here where you can pause on moving forward with the design development drawings for the CSF, but only for a period. Those drawings are not as complicated as the ECC nine-one-one building. So they can catch up if they are approved within a certain timeline. I could not tell you specifically today, but Jerry and I, speaking this morning, we can confirm with PIA, the architect. But our, our general thought would be, if you're delaying, you know, five, six weeks, then that would be enough time for reconsideration, make sure you have the right CSF, but then still approve moving forward with DD drawings for the CSF. Have that catch up with the ECC nine-one, nine-one-one, and then still be on the same path to start construction at the same time. Which, if we're looking at, you know, best savings, best cost efficiency to move forward, you would want these projects to move forward together. You're not paying for, twice, for having deployed staffing, having rental equipment, having two mobilizations for subcontractors coming out and doing the project separately. So that would be the, the general thought is, yes, you can pause and pick up those DDs later, but if it's too long of a pause, it'll fall behind and those projects can't move together at the same time.
Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you. I think that's a really helpful comment. And I think what it does, I suspect, we could approve both buildings today and instruct PIA to not incur any costs on the CSF design, DD, until six weeks from today. And in that six weeks, we give our administration an opportunity to tell us if they are concerned that if we consolidate all, all county, you know, sort of other entities out there, that this is still the building we would build. And in that case, we've got, we haven't slowed anybody down on anything. We know we're building something somewhere out there. But what we're building, at least we buy ourselves an opportunity, not today, without any information on what does a consolidation look like, if any, on, on the CSF, without, without being concerned that we're investing money that immediately leads to change work orders or add-ons, or, oh, if only we had known we were consolidating, we would have done something differently. That's the, that's the, the concern I have. So I don't know. If other people think that's the way we could go, go forward, I suspect PIA is completely willing to put this project on the back burner for six weeks to let our administration do that.
When you started there, it sounded awful like a motion.
Well, it was up.
I think, I think more of a recommendation.
It is up to six weeks. I'm sorry, go ahead, Darryl.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Somebody go. Commissioner Walter?
I've had my hand up for a while, so thank you. I'd like to hear from Mr. Chase. We haven't heard from the facilities director on what he thinks about the facilities building. I've never heard from anybody saying they don't think it's enough. So happy to hear what you have to say.
Thank you. Thanks for asking. So as was mentioned earlier, we went through six months of, of meetings, of design process, of tours to understand this building and understand its, its right sizing. I do believe that this building, as it's designed, is right sized for us both now and in the future. It gives us additional collaborative space with COA that we do not have now. It gives us additional space to be able to, more effective space, to be able to work on small equipment. It gives additional space to be able to work on vehicles as well, which can ultimately be a long-term savings. For a facility standpoint, we are ultimately a, a distributed model, all right? So our staff is, is in the various locations. So regardless of staffing size, this building would, would allow us to support the staffing size that we have now as well as into the future. So I am confident of that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I, I don't know where this conversation was coming from, because all I had heard was that facilities was happy with the design and looking to the future. And there is a lot of, and I know you've had your garage sales every year for the last few years, but there is a lot of stuff that doesn't need to come when we're moving, right? That's a big part of the, the work of moving is probably getting rid of a lot of stuff that isn't going to be moving.
Yes, if you, if you move homes, you don't, you don't bring all that stuff with you. You get rid of that stuff ahead of time.
Yeah.
And we've been actively doing that, and not only for, you know, this building, but for, for other properties around the county.
Yeah. I still have boxes I moved probably sixteen years ago. I haven't opened, so don't, don't think, not a, not a good approach, and that I learned from myself. But, so I don't know. I, I'm in favor of moving ahead with this piece of it as well. Commission on Aging piece of it and facilities and the, all the moving parts that have to do with the civic center. It makes sense from a cost savings perspective, as well as just keeping all of those things on the rails to move forward with the central storage facility as well.
Commissioner Nelson, Commissioner McAllister? You guys want to finish?
I, I was just regarding Commissioner Andrews' comments. I think you asked if that would be a motion. I think it was a good recommendation. I think more of a consensus from this board rather than actual motion with a timeline. But I would enjoy hearing from our administrator and his thoughts on that topic.
I think either way is fine. I think that what we experienced last week in is momentum. You know, Commissioner, Commissioner McAllister was talking last Friday about a collective vision. And that would be a great thing to have as soon as we can have it, because we could say today, move the GovCenter operations, everything but the elected officials, move them to Lefranier. That's a collective vision, and we could say, we're moving forward. We've got at least, what, a year and a half to two years of construction on the EOC nine-one-one?
We were estimating for the duration of both projects, twelve months.
Twelve months. So there.
That's twelve months with the expect, expected start, the beginning of 2026. So you, you still have the rest of this year before the start of construction, and then a year of construction.
So the, the concept could be that once you start building, you don't stop building. You continue through the progress over the next year to three years potentially. So the, this board needs to be comfortable with their decision, because it's going to last forever.
No pressure.
Thanks, Nate.
No pressure.
No pressure. I, I happen to echo Commissioner Andrews' comments. I think that, you know, PIA can drag their feet a little bit. No cost incurred on the storage facility, even though I've heard from a couple of people. We got what? How many departments?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven departments. I've heard from two. So, and we're talking about a collective vision. If we're all going to move to Lefranier except for elected officials, I don't think it's going to be big enough, but I could be wrong. But I would ask Jerry and Bobby, if you could give us, next time we meet, an, an example of what kind of cost savings we had by the deploy, I believe it's called the deployment cost, we start construction for both. Give us a rough number on that, so we can include that in our decision.
Yeah, well, some of that is very easy to calculate. The other piece is that is not something that you can give a direct cost to is when you're bidding an overall project that involves two different buildings, and you have one trade that can be involved in both of those, you're likely going to get a more aggressive number based on the volume of work that they're going to have versus if you're just bidding for them to do the ECC building, and then separately going to have them bid to go do this other project, you're going to often see that there's savings, because they're going to have a combined larger project. So that, that's not quite as easy to calculate. But things like general mobilization costs for trades demobilized twice, you know, rental equipment, general trades, deployed staffing costs, things like that, we, we can calculate that. If you just treated them as straight separate projects, that's something that we can calculate and really show what the savings is between the two of them going together.
And possibly more interested bidders as well, because it's a bigger project.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, for sure.
You know? Absolutely. I'm down for all that, you know? That's why we buy our toilet paper like this, right? Instead of just four at a time.
For a moment, I wanted to circle back with a couple of comments earlier. Certainly, we will remove the reference to a jail on that South Bacon property. There's roughly eight acres there, eight acres there. The detention pond, for example, is surfaced right now, but that can go underground at some future date, and parking put over that area to the south. Same thing with that further west detention pond. So we've tried to be conscientious of design to make sure we were flanking those areas, future parking areas, and mostly the center point to be all of future building or buildings. Also wanted to reference that CSF. There is room for expansion on that, without changing the design of the parking lot that much. So we can add to the south. We could take some of that parking out. We could take. could take one of those landscaping areas out. All of this is flexible enough. There's room around the site.
Thank you. I saw somebody else's hand up down here. Commissioner Spence?
Yeah, so, I was curious if we did move our county facilities to Lefranier Road, as we've talked about at our study session. Where would you see your office being? Would you want to be in this building with the equipment, or would you have a building where this proposed sheriff's facility could be?
As long as I didn't have to wear a suit, I could go anywhere. But, a couple of concepts. One, we initially thought, you know, we talked about knocking down the existing public services building, the old oil and gas building that was transferred to that building, and re, you know, rebuilding a PSB, public services building, at that location. The other concept is, where the future sheriff office is here, we could have a governmental center there, where all non-elected offices could be.
What about where the future juvenile facility is?
And all of it.
I mean, this doesn't show the full extent to the west, right?
Yeah, correct. Commissioner Andrews is probably more correct that we would want that Gov. Center adjacent to Lefranier, so that that's the first thing that's accessed. And then, anything beyond that could be pushed to the east, whether it's a juvenile justice center, or a part of a jail, or whatever. That could go back to the east.
Okay, so, since we're kind of talking about future ideas, maybe we should have our next meeting about this, a better idea of the parcel layout, the 80-acre area, so we can kind of visualize what can fit in that area in the future.
Sure we could. I just wanted to confirm, it's eight acres. I may have said 80. It's eight.
That's two back forties.
Eight acres.
That's a lot to work with.
But there's still plenty of room to work with on that.
All right.
Anyone else? Commissioner Walter?
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion to move ahead with the central storage facility as it's designed, as well, to offer the consolidation of costs that we understand will be the case, according to our experts here. Ford?
All right, we have a motion with Commissioner Walter. Now, then, your motion is to proceed as presented, correct?
What is that?
Okay.
Just a check and support by Commissioner Spence.
I want to hear the motion again. I want to make sure I understand.
Move ahead with the central storage facility as designed.
Okay, so it wasn't connected to the other one, it was just...
Well, I don't know why...
I'm not judging, I just...
It's a separate motion, because we already passed the other motion.
Okay. I wasn't inferring anything. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this as designed, without an understanding that our admin, we're not going to incur any costs from PIA designing this building until our administration has had an opportunity to ensure it's future-proofed. This was not designed with a campus model in mind. This was designed to meet what it was designed to meet, and I remain concerned about that. I think both can be true. I think we can move it forward, and also, we can ensure it is future-proofed for the potential that we're consolidated out there. But if the motion is that that is not built in, then I'm not going to support that.
Is that a friendly amendment, or are you letting the motion stand?
I'm just asking for clarification as to what the motion means.
I don't understand your question.
Are we asking PIA to delay incurring costs on this for six weeks, or are we telling them to start incurring costs today?
I'd say move ahead to consolidate the work that everybody's putting into it, to consolidate the work on both the EOC and the central storage facility at the same time. I don't know, we've heard from Facilities and from administration, and that they are comfortable, very comfortable, with the design for the future, for now, from every department related to it. And also, frankly, they do have a vision for moving things out there. So, they're nodding, thank you. So, they feel that it is comfortable if we move other departments out there, if we make that decision, that it would be more than adequate for that. So, I don't know why we would delay it when they're going to come back in a month and say they're happy with it.
Taxpayer dollars.
Well, taxpayer dollars, we're wasting taxpayer dollars by delaying it.
No, 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 we're not. What we're doing is they're putting it out of hold, and we're to look at it and make sure we're not wasting taxpayer dollars. We've not made a decision not to build or not to design it. We just asked for a pause, so we can make sure that we're not wasting taxpayer dollars, in my opinion.
But the pause is designed to expand it, is what I understand.
Potentially.
Which would be spending more money.
Maybe.
Doesn't seem like it's this building that we're going to need to expand, though.
We don't know that.
Because we've already gone through a lot of modifications on both facilities, and in my opinion, just one out of nine of us, I feel like we've had a lot of modifications. We've negotiated. We've made adjustments to both facilities, and we've reached, we've all made, like, sacrifices, and you've changed the square footage. I kind of feel like it's time to take the next step.
As far as the facilities, the storage facility is, the only change there is that they removed DPW.
They said they weren't interested in that, so we're not going to...
The initial one was designed with them included, and they take that away. That's the only change that's been done.
We have spent exactly seven days thinking about the idea of consolidating the entire county to a new campus. This was not designed with consolidation in mind. I think we owe at least enough time to evaluate if there is a consolidation. If everybody moves down there, is this what we built? I don't think it's a hard question. I don't think it undermines any grant application for anybody or any other work that's going on. I think it's a due diligence. And if we're not going to, and my view is, we owe some due diligence if, to at least evaluate the no regrets, if we consolidate everything. We've had seven days to think about that. And this was not designed at all with that as the vision.
Well, in a way, it was, because we have been talking about a larger campus design, and people are nodding, yes, that it does have that in mind. I don't think that in five weeks, we're going to, like, we haven't even gotten the steering committee for the jail going yet. We haven't, we're not going to decide in five weeks what all facilities are going to be there. So, I feel like that's just delaying this decision. I just, I don't think that by the end of June, we're going to have that decision made with conversation with the city, with, you know, two more regular meetings. I just, I don't see the five weeks as being enough time that would even change anything related to the facility, the storage facility.
Agreed.
We won't know unless we try, but having nonetheless, well, somebody does have anything else to say, we have a motion on the floor. You have the motion clear.
I'm going to repeat it to make sure it's right. Move ahead with the CSF building, or whatever, as designed by consolidating work on both EOC and CSF at the same time. Is that the motion?
Can we have that without acronyms?
Yes, I will make sure it has whatever that CSF is.
Central Storage Facility.
I'll put that in the minutes. Central Storage Facility.
That was made by Commissioner Walter and seconded by Commissioner Spence. Can we do a roll call vote on that, please?
Henchel?
No.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
No.
McAllister?
No.
Morris?
No.
Andrews?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Seifert?
No.
I'll make the motion that we instruct administration to evaluate conceptually whether, if we consolidate all county facilities, including administration, IT, HR, COA, MSU Extension, and any others.
Can't write that fast.
Twenty-five other departments of the county.
Well, but most of them are already there. Most of them are already out there. The only ones that aren't out there are, I'll go through it again, HR, IT, administration, COA.
MSUE.
MSUE.
Senior?
Any who missed.
Parks is not moving.
Nope. To the Boardman Campus, if that would change, conceptually, the design of the CSF.
Boardman Campus?
Lefranier Campus.
Lefranier Campus.
Lefranier Campus.
One of those campuses, over there.
In a month. And personally, I would encourage, maybe if, given that Cunningham Limp has a lot of familiarity with the site, with the campus, if it costs money to have them conceptualize that impact, then I would welcome them doing it, because it would be very efficient. And they've obviously understand the site.
Are you putting a timeframe on it?
I said a month.
You said a month, okay.
Would you mind adding equalization?
An equalization. I would not mind adding equalization.
I'm sorry, are you not including law enforcement or jail?
Correct.
Okay.
Or prosecutor.
I'll second.
Or the electeds.
Sorry, did you get that, Bonnie?
Stay with me.
If I could just add one thing, and that is, it would, if Commissioner be interested in being part of the Project Alpha team, just to sit along with us, hear the conversations, see how it goes.
That's a fantastic idea, and I hadn't got there yet, but TJ cut me off. That was my, that was going to be my motion. So, we're going to come back to that, Ms. Forsyth. That's a great idea. And so, we have a motion by Commissioner Andrews, seconded by Commissioner Henchel. Bonnie, could you reread the motion, please? Sorry.
Instruct administration to evaluate, conceptually, all county depart, not all county departments, certain county departments, including HR, IT, administration, COA, MSUE, equalization to the Lefranier Campus within a month. I don't know, to see if it'll change.
To evaluate the impact on the CSF.
Centralized storage facility.
Okay, to evaluate the impact on CSF.
If any.
Does that sound right?
That was seconded by Commissioner Henchel, Commissioner Hensel.
I just have to just comment, Mr. Administrator, just, I pulled up the webpage of all the county departments. There's like 27 of them. You can't really, like, unless you live this every day, you can't, like, think of every moving piece all at once. It would be really helpful for us to have a matrix of, hey, this is all the departments, where it is, where we're proposing, and hopefully lead us closer to that unified vision you had asked for. Because if we had that, kind of like, all set, this would be a lot easier just to, you know, hey, we've gone through every moving piece here, and then, you know, we're not throwing at the last minute, oh, equalization too, you know? If we could just have a matrix, a spreadsheet, maybe, that would be great.
With your conceptualization, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
That'd be great. Any more comments? Bonnie, roll call vote, if you please.
Spence?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Seifert?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you, everyone. So, on the last little tidbit on Project Alpha, Mr. Forsyth made a mention about adding commissioners to the, what is that called? The construction committee?
Committee or project team, doesn't matter.
Project team for Project Alpha. I think as we move forward, looking at a vision and building a jail and everything else that we talk about building, I think it would be, the value would be incalculable to have a couple of commissioners on that to see the process and bring back to the board. And I have a couple of people I would like to volunteer in mine, but you know what, I'm going to volunteer Commissioner McAllister and Commissioner Flynn, but if they don't want to do it, is that a yes or a no?
I'd rather not.
Okay, so, Commissioner McAllister, I'll take a volunteer, looking at the end down there.
I'll raise my hand. I've been...
I'm in.
All right.
Turns out I have opinions.
May I?
I don't even know where to go with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Will this satisfy Mr. Alger's request that we had at last Wednesday's meeting, where you wanted a committee of commissioners to help kind of guide this next phase of where we want to move county services, potentially?
This will be specific for Project Alpha. My thought was, and it was satisfied at that joint meeting by the suggestion that we have the mayor, mayor pro tem, the chair, the vice chair engaged through the building commission, and that building commission is already, there's a dudel pole out to begin the first meeting for that building commission with the mayor and mayor pro tem. One of the thoughts that I had mentioned last week was the creation of some type of an ad hoc to move forward, but I don't think there was any real interest in that at that point in time.
I feel like there's a little bit of an overlap going on here, but maybe, not to get down into the rabbit hole or get into the weeds, we'll stay focused on this.
So, I think this whole board has a lot of interest in staying engaged in the concept planning, and I wouldn't want to defer that to a subcommittee. I think we want to keep that discussion at this level. I think what we're talking about is, you know, are the showers going to have glass doors, or are they going to have curtains? You know what I mean? Like, if you want Commissioner, you know, input in that level of granularity, I think that's fair to happen in a committee. But concepts of where we move and how we move, and all those, I think, should stay at the board level. At least, that's how I sort of envision what you're asking, in terms of Mr. Forsyth's suggestion to have somebody on the commission, sitting through those meetings, is more the granularity as opposed to the concepts.
Yeah, are we going to be picking out tiles and colors, or?
Yeah, if you want to.
I agree with Jerry, so...
Ad hoc that you're proposing would be Commissioner McAllister, then, and Commissioner Andrews at this point?
I don't think, I think it's, there's an existing project team that includes a lot of staff and the advisors.
Hanging out with Jerry.
Hanging out with Jerry?
Yes.
So, the people proposed to hang out with you, Jerry, at this point are Commissioner McAllister and...
Would you prefer to do it?
I would love to be a part of it.
There you go.
But it sounds like you want to be a part of it.
Nope, it was silent when Commissioner Flynn declined the opportunity, and no one else, I grabbed it. But if you want to take it, Fern, I welcome you sitting on it instead of...
Fantastic, so, Bonnie, I'm making the motion that Commissioner McAllister and Commissioner Spence are now added to the Project Alpha team.
Second.
Who's the second?
Henchel.
Thank you, Mr. Henchel. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Fantastic. Seeing that we have nothing removed from the consent calendar, let's take a break. Ten minutes. Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, it seems like that.
And on that note, we'll do a 30-second warning that we're coming back, ran a little over. All right, we're going to call the meeting back in session at 10:43. We're going to go back to Departmental Items 9A. Approval of the 13th Circuit Court Community Corrections Grant Application, MDOC Grant Application.
Good morning. Shree Shively, I'm the manager of the Community Corrections Department for the Circuit Court and the District Court. Every year I have to come before you for your approval to submit our grant application for our plans and services, but I typically start with just a five-minute brief description of what services we do provide and what this application's for. Our program operates under a public act, so PA 511, and that gives funds through the Michigan Department of Corrections, which is for those convicted of and charged with felonies. Funds in order for local county governments to provide services to those in our communities with the overall goal to reduce prison commitment rates and keep individuals in the local communities rather than sending them to the Department of Corrections where possible. And so what that does is we have a Community Corrections Advisory Board that's made up of representatives from Antrim, Grand Traverse, and Lelandon. Commissioner Nelson is the commissioner for your board that's on mine, on our advisory board. And this is not a plan of mine, it's our advisory board's plan, it's the county's plan. So I'm always throughout the year trying to meet with people to find out what are the needs that are individuals that are in our justice system that are not being met, that might be able to be met through our department. And so that's kind of what this, the general description of what it is. Some of the programs that we use, that we oversee are our pre-trial program, it's our biggest program. Well, that is anybody that is charged with a felony in, like I said, any of the three counties. I have staff that will interview each person who is arrested while they're in the jail, and our overall goal is that we see them before they have their first appearance before law enforcement, or before a judge or a magistrate. We interview them, get some basic information, and as well as some personal information from them, we run a thorough criminal history report on them that looks throughout the United States and finds out what their criminal history is even in other states, whether they have holds or any other involvement in any other courts. We also, and then we make, we do, that's a pretty thorough investigation of a person, and we create a recommendation, we use it, that's called the Praxis. We use that and provide that to the magistrates before they're going to set bond for somebody. And on that Praxis, we're recommending whether or not somebody is appropriate for a personal recognizance bond, which means there's no financial cost to them being released, or whether they're not eligible for that and they're eligible for a financial bond. We don't make recommendations as to what that bond amount would be, just merely that they are okay for a financial bond. And in on that Praxis as well, we just give a little brief synopsis of the person, and then we make recommendations for, if they're released from jail, what conditions the judge or magistrate might want to impose upon them for supervision. And so that leads to the supervision part of our pre-trial program. And that is mainly for those who are charged with some sort of violent crime or a crime against a person. And so we supervise anybody that's released from the jail on a GPS monitor, and we're the people that are in charge of them. I don't, a lot of agencies farm that out to a third party. We don't farm that out, where that's all handled in-house. I'm the person that supervises them on nights and weekends and holidays. And so we respond really quickly to any kind of violations that somebody might have. Our overall goal with any of the programs that we have are to assist people to be successful in the justice system. So you're all aware, it's a difficult process. And a lot of the people that come through our services may be developmentally delayed substance, have substance use disorders, they may have mental health issues. So our goal is to assist them so that they're not violating and constantly being sent back to jail. That increases costs for everybody, right? And so our goal is to keep them so that we can keep them out of jail and complying with whatever bond conditions that they have. And we have a really high success rate with that. We have a 92% success rate with people not violating the bond conditions to the extreme that they have to be remanded back to jail. And so that's what we do with our pre-trial service program, we have a jail alternative program. So that is for individuals, and that is both those in the Circuit Court and the District Court who are sentenced to jail. And once they've served a portion of their jail sentence, our staff goes in and does an assessment on them and determines why they're in the justice system. Why do you keep coming back into the justice system? Like, what do you need help with? So it's not to just get somebody out and send them on their merry way. Nobody, that's not what we're doing, it's a very intensive supervision program. And our overall goal is to address why you're here and to get you some help to start addressing that. And we do it in a really intensive way so that it's not, general probation, they report once a month, right? You approach your probation officer, you haven't done what you're supposed to do, I'll see you next month, and you better have done it by then. Our people report to us a minimum of weekly, they have to report in person. Most of those folks we are in contact daily with on the telephone. And so we are addressing immediately if they're having any issues and they're not complying with something. Because delaying and delaying and delaying is not going to get them anywhere to addressing the needs and the issues that they have. We also assist people in getting into what are called recovery homes. So those are sober living environments, transitional housing, that kind of process. That's for individuals who don't have a safe supportive home to go home to, which is the majority of the individuals that we work with. And then we also insist individuals getting into residential treatment services through various agencies throughout northern Michigan and even some in mid-Michigan. And once they're done with what would have been their jail out date, they're done with us, then they go on regular probation. So it's not this long time that they're with us, it's, it could be a couple months, five, six months sometimes. And so that's why we do it so intensively, to try and get them the best care that we can get for them in the shortest time period, so that once they do go on regular probation, they can be more successful with that because they have everything set up. We have their housing set up, their food, if they need to get food assistance, if they need any kind of other entitlements that they are eligible for, we help them get all of that set up before they're really released on regular probation. One of the other things that we do through our, this grant that I'm going to submit is we pay for the probation officer in District Court. That program is three years, and the first year that individuals are in that program, they are, they plea into as a felony. And so this is our, that's my pool, my population are the felony offenders. And so we pay for the wages of that individual, the probation officer, just for that first year. And then it goes into the District Court budget. So that comes out of this grant as well, is for the first year of that. So what this grant is before you is I'm required to go before Antrim, Grand Traverse, and Lelandon, every county, do the same presentation and ask for your permission to submit an application for $315,200. And so you'll, you have a proposed resolution about that grant application. If you approve that, I submit the grant application on your behalf and then receive and file the funds when they come in. We've had these funds for 20, almost 30 years, I think. We've never been denied an application, and so I don't anticipate it being denied again. So that's the number one reason that I'm here for today.
Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson. I want to embarrass Shree Shively here for a minute. She's one of the unsung heroes in our community. I've worked on this committee now for over four years. She talks about diversion and supervision, she talks about the 92% success rate. I watched her with her budgets, with her numbers, and she has these metrics that she has to meet with the state to get a lot of state funding. The funding for this comes from the state, the MDOC. She hits those numbers every single time, she runs a tight ship, she keeps us informed every meeting of where we're at, what percentage we're at. It wouldn't happen without somebody like her. And some people need to be in the jail or in prison because it's protecting us from society, but a lot of people don't need to be incarcerated if they can keep their job and they can be with their family, their kids, if there's these supervision programs. So this is an important program, not every area has it. So I just want to highlight the efforts that she and her team does. But trust me, you don't want to be in her sights if you're in violation because she's, she's going to come get you. Like she said, she kind of quietly mentioned that nights and weekends and holidays, she's handling this, it's 24/7/365. So hats off to her, and I'll, and later that I'll make a motion to accept this, or this, approve this submission of the grant application.
Second.
All right, great, we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson to approve the grant application, seconded by Commissioner McAllister, any more discussion? I know you do. Anybody else besides Commissioner Andrews and I before we get there? Commissioner Walter?
Well, I just want to make sure the, the motion is, also includes the part about receiving and filing the funds once approved accordingly.
Yeah, that's very important.
Just the, the language that's in the packet is, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. I don't have as much history with this application as either Commissioner Nelson or obviously Ms. Shively. But I, I have sat on this board for the last, this is my third time seeing this application come to us. And I was looking back at the applications in 2024 and 2023, and it looks like either the application changed or we only have an incomplete application.
You don't have an incomplete application. This year they instituted what's called web grants, the state of Michigan, MDOC. So it's a completely different process this whole time. I was actually one of two agencies in the state that was one of their trial agencies. And so I worked with them to develop the new application process and everything. It's much shorter, it's much simpler, they're asking for a lot less information. Some of the information they had been asking for in past years had nothing to do with what we do. They asked in past years for an analysis of the jail utilization. That, that has nothing to do with us, but it was a data gathering source for the state of Michigan, but it wasn't, I don't have anything to do with that, but I would give them the data. And so they finally decided that was beyond our purview of our jobs to that kind of thing. So yes, it's totally different looking than it has been in the past. But it was, it took a grant application that probably took me, and I don't do this all day, every day when I'm doing it, but it takes me about a month to do the application. And I understand that I was their test site, so I got a little bit more of experience with it. It took me about four hours this year to complete the application, and I'm not alone. Everybody has been praising, thank you for moving to a much easier process that we do.
I appreciate that. Unfortunately, where I sit, data is helpful. And there are so few opportunities for us to get data about our prison population and our jail population in this county. So I, while I appreciate that that may have eased the administrative burden on the courts applying for the grant, I think it is unfortunate for this board who has so few windows into our comparison and our metrics in terms of prisoner commitment rates and otherwise, to not be able to see that after, for all these years we've been able to watch that. That said, I have a couple of questions, specific questions. It looks like on page three of eight of the packet, where it says participating counties, or counties participating in the CCAB, it lists all three counties, but then on page two, I'm sorry, on page four, the next page, it says counties participating in the CCAB is only Grand Traverse.
So when, part of this new application process, the way that it comes out on the screen, it divides it into Antrim, Grand Traverse, Lelandon. And so I only included for this purpose is like, it's pages. And so I included Grand Traverses because this is the data that's needed for Grand Traverse. If you want the full thing, I can send that to you, I don't mind that at all.
I just want to make sure I understand, is this grant, the portion, the $315,000 that we're applying for, is it only for Grand Traverse? Does Antrim also have a separate application?
No, this is all for Antrim, Grand Traverse, and Lelandon, all three counties. We're, we're called the 13th Circuit Court Community Corrections. So we don't apply for funds for, a specific amount for Antrim, a specific amount for Grand Traverse, or a specific amount for Lelandon, it's one lump sum.
So I, so I was trying to understand why it says that there's a Grand Traverse section. I guess my question is, it looks like this was sort of cut and paste, there's sort of a line on that page four, right under the, today's date, and then, then there's some criminal justice system analysis. Is the criminal justice system analysis, is that for Grand Traverse?
That's for the overall Circuit Court.
That's for the overall? Okay, and so this application will go to the other counties as well?
It's already been through, so it first gets approved by our Community Corrections Advisory Board, which that was done in April, and it's already been approved by Lelandon, I'm before you today, and then I next go before Antrim.
Okay. So my question is, as I understand it, the CCAB PCR is grand, is the 13th Circuit Court's prison commitment rate, prisoner commitment rate? And then, so that column in that table for 2024 shows our, and this is only felonies, correct?
This is only felonies.
So our prisoner commitment rate in Grand Traverse County is that column, and then next to it, it has the state PCR, correct?
Correct.
So that's comparing where we are in terms of how many prisoner, people who are arrested end up in felony prison time?
Correct.
Versus how much at the state level we're at. And what gives me the greatest pause is that those numbers are twice. A group two straddle cell and group two straddle are more than twice the state PCR level.
Correct.
And are getting higher versus last year and the year before that.
Our overall prison commitment rate is actually the lowest this year than it's ever been.
Yes, I see that.
But the, you're correct, the straddle cell and the group two. So what a straddle cell conviction is, is somebody who could be sent to prison or could be sent to local incarceration. And it's the judge's discretion who they, who, what sentence they give them. They have sentencing guidelines, and within those sentencing guidelines are months. You know, so they could be 12 to, actually typically, they're typically nine to a higher level month, meaning they can go to the local incarceration for under 12 months, because a jail is for under 12 months, and then higher than that would go to prison. So that is the discretion of the judges who are sentencing the individual before them, whether or not they send them to local incarceration or send them to prison.
There, there, I don't know, as, as other members of this commission, as we're talking about building jails and we're talking about the programs that surround who goes to jail and how we can ensure that we're not sending more people than needed, the, the, these numbers are, are very concerning. When you look at the statewide average being 12% for group two, and we are at 55% for group two. How is this grant helping us get closer to state levels and reduce those numbers?
So some of those levels, this is where that data analysis would be.
Yeah, it would, wouldn't it?
Could be, so far you're correct. So some of the numbers, what you have to understand is that there's a lot of factors, and I, this is concerning to the state as well, but it's not at a level where they're not going to consider to continue funding us because those levels change all the time. But if an individual is before a judge, and the judge is looking at what their performance has been, maybe on bond, on probation, is this a probation violation? Is this their fourth probation violation, and they're finally done, and I'm sending you to prison? Right? So there is a lot of factors in every single sentencing that they're, they're doing. I don't get to have a say in that. That is absolutely at the discretion of the judges that the person is before.
But that's, that explanation is true statewide. That wouldn't explain why our numbers are four times the number at group two level. Those discretionary factors, every judge in every county across Michigan is evaluating those same factors, those are statutory factors, right? How do we better, as a commission about to potentially build a new law enforcement center that is right-sized, you know, and appropriate, and supporting the programs for people coming in and their success when they leave, how do we get these numbers down?
So one of the other factors that you have to consider also is that we are, we have three, two very small counties in our circuit, and then Grand Traverse. Grand Traverse is typically about 70% of the numbers that we serve. So we may have about 600 individuals, 700 individuals come through our Circuit Court system through the year. And there are other locations, especially where they're very, very low, and they are tens of thousands that are coming through their system. So for example, in Antrim County, I think it was last year, a couple years ago, our prison commitment rate in Antrim County was 50%. That is extremely high, right, on the offset. When you looked into the numbers, that was three people that either could have gone to local, local jail or could have gone to prison. Those three individuals were convicted of criminal sexual conduct. And so there were only six people that were sent to prison in that category, and of those, and of the six, three were criminal sexual conduct. So that automatically makes it, those are not individuals I can target, they're not even a part of my population. That makes it a 50% commitment rate for Antrim County. Same thing for Lelandon, there was one year when Lelandon County sent four people to prison total. And they had a 75% prison commitment rate.
But this is, this is a consolidated number, right? This is, so basically this is a weighted, this isn't putting Antrim County at 50%, Grand Traverse at 12%, Lelandon, and then averaging, it's saying a system-wide, our percent is 55% for it.
But we overall have a lower denominator than other counties that have higher populations that they're sentencing.
It's a ratio, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good question for the judges.
I mean, so I'll just, we have to have this program, it sounds like, I have additional questions, like you indicated that a big part of this grant is the pre-trial assessment, and it looks like almost all, all of our huge percentage of the people coming in go through that process. What we don't have is the outcome of that. How many people that go through pre-trial assessment are recommended for bail versus personal recognizance? That, you know, the date, I feel like there's more data to be had, and I feel like we're going to want that data as we get further down into the, into the evaluating the programs that are attendant to our criminal justice system in our community.
And I actually have that data, it's called a concurrent rate, it's not required as part of the grant application. It is required, my quarterly reports that I send off to the state of Michigan, they require a public, a pre-trial appearance rate, so that is how many people are making appearances at the required court appointments, and the public safety rate. And is that as an individual who was released on bonded, they commit another crime? And so they require those two things, they don't require the concurrent rate, but I have that data. Off the top of my head, I think our concurrent rate, it's above 80%. And what a concurrent rate is, is when we, part of the Praxis make a recommendation as far as a PR bond or, or a non-PR bond, does the judge or magistrate follow that recommendation? And we have, it's above an 80% rate, I just don't need exact numbers.
So I guess the bottom line is, if there's more data that we can get as a board that relates to the, the metrics that go into the success of our diversion programs, the success of our probation and our supervision and our, I, I think, particularly if it's public information that you've already provided to the state, it would be very helpful for, for that to come in periodically or with the grant application just so that we can see that data and have that perspective and context.
I can definitely do that, so my quarterly reports, I provide them to our, at our CCAB meetings every quarter. I can submit that, and it can go in the,
Receive and File.
The Receive and File for sure, so you can see those quarterly, that's, that's very simple. And that is a much more detailed report.
That would be great, thank you.
I can do that.
More questions? I got a couple of questions. On page two, there you got pre-trial assessment, pre-trial supervision, and jail alternative. So it kind of, pre-trial assessment between 2019, 2020, to 2023, 2024, as well as the jail alternative, it's pretty close to the same percentage right there. But pre-trial supervision actually went down. Can you explain, is pre-trial supervision, I'm releasing you on your own recognizance, or I'm going to put a tether on you, what?
Yes, all of that, actually. So if, if we're recommending that somebody be released from jail, not everybody who's released from jail needs to be supervised by us. They may not have any real supervisable conditions. Say that they're charged with a financial crime that's over a certain amount, so they're now considered a felony case. Their only supervisable condition is to not access a bank account or not. So if they've committed a crime against their employer, to not go to that location, to not access their bank accounts, that's nothing my staff can supervise. It doesn't mean that there's been a drop in the number of people released from jail, it just means that there's a fluctuation in who is appropriate for our supervision services. So we'll supervise anybody that has been ordered to have drug testing, alcohol testing, so OWI thirds, every single one of them. We, anybody charged with an OWI third, we supervise them on bond. The felony drug cases, we're supervising them on bond. Anybody with a identified victim or anybody that is a protected party, we supervise those cases. And so we're only supervising the, the most serious offenses and that have something we can supervise. I'm not going to bill the state of Michigan for something just because somebody was released from jail, they'll never pay me for that. It's something I'm having contact with that person, right? Weekly contact, monthly contact, via email, phone calls, we have an app that people check in with, it's that kind of contact.
So this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, which I probably am. So the pre-trial supervision numbers would seem to indicate that as the number of people that have had pre-trial assessment has increased, the number of people that need to be supervised before pre-trial has not?
Not for last year, right? So we had, we had, it's usually remained stable, but for last year, we had a lower number. I can tell you that this year already we're higher than we were last year.
Okay.
I can tell you that last year, we had, we did 629 people, we did our pre-trial assessment on them. We are already at 580 for the year, and my year ends September 30th. So we're going to be over those numbers for that. The pre-trial assessment portion, we are already, I think at 119% of where I should be. So this, those numbers are going to be this year. They're just different every year depending on what individual is coming through the justice system. We've had an enormous amount of violent crimes this year.
Thank you, Frances, my question.
I had a couple. I mean, a fewer proportion.
So fewer people were coming through, right? You're looking at 19 and 20, where there were 382, and this year we are at 600, or last year we're at 629. That is the increase of people coming in the justice system.
That's my question, it's not that you were not.
It's not that you were not.
Nope. Mm-hmm. There's that. That's why I did this, so that you could see how much growth that there has been. I mean, if you will, talk to Noel Morgenberg, you know, the prosecutor in Grand Travers County and the judges, like our circuit court is overwhelmed with people being charged with felonies. And the majority of those cases are either violent crimes or a methamphetamine case right now.
Well, 2020, we did spend a lot of time social distancing.
And they didn't hardly arrest anybody.
But it seems like with those two years being, I don't know.
No, I actually included 2019, 2020 on purpose so that you could see the, the growth that we have had. And that is not that we just suddenly started seeing people. That's growth in numbers coming through our system.
One last question, which is it looks like you've got a vacancy on your board.
We do.
I wonder if that. Staffing needs, we always. Do we improve outcomes for people going through? And I'm.
I have honestly tried for several years to get somebody to apply for that board, that position on the board and it just hasn't been successful. We at one point had somebody from Michigan Works for several years that was in that position on the board and their role was dissolved within Michigan Works. And I would welcome that.
Yeah. You might be more persuasive than Michigan Works.
It's, it's who you know. And if you want to have a conversation with somebody, I would definitely welcome.
I believe that's an application, not an appointment.
I know.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Oh my goodness, let's start all over again. To approve.
That's the word, Don.
The resolution as presented. Thank you. It was made by Commissioner Nelson and seconded by?
Mr. McAllister.
Commissioner McAllister, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Fantastic. Thank you for your time today and the information.
Thank you.
All right. Nine B, Health Department, Mr. Leahy. Mr. Wheat.
Morning.
Also again, Health Department. So before I have Mr. Wheat here to introduce himself, I did want to, and we dive into septic, throw a few shambles plugs here. One, thank you for the support on the consent calendar. We have an adolescent health team providing services to vulnerable youth and you all approved some infrastructure improvements to those sites. So I know our team very much appreciates that. And then just going back to the conversation, I don't have a lot of input around the storage barns. I'll leave that to, but in terms of operational capacities and efficiencies, spend a lot of time traveling back and forth to meet with administration, HR, IT. I do see those as a tenant, current tenant of LaFrenier Road. I was optimistic about the conversation and appreciate the consideration to improve on those as a county as we step into the future. But in relation to stepping into the future for our Health Department, I have Mr. Wheat here, our Director of Environmental Health. And today is scheduled a potential adoption meeting for the Grand Travers County Onsite Water and Sewage Disposal Inspection Program Evaluation, excuse me. I love it. Thank you. So a little bit of same slides that you've seen before, but you all manage a ton of business. So I do like to kind of reset the table for all of us as to why we're here and what we've accomplished thus far. The only update to this slide that you've seen before is the public hearing that was held on the 23rd of April. So you can see a number of time spent with ad hoc and in front of this board, whether it be in study session or regular meeting. Just for reference again, that we are where we're supposed to be when it comes to Michigan law as it relates to a potential regulation to be adopted in a county. And what has happened since? So a public hearing was held on the 23rd of April. As mentioned in public comment a bit, we did take some, some notes there and received some. We did apply some adjustments to language to that draft that was discussed on the 23rd of April. We, we did look at those adjustments made then and determined that there wasn't enough substance there in regards to the requirements to ask for a second public hearing. So therefore, we as a department felt comfortable moving forward with just this adoption meeting in which we have here today. Mr. Wheat will step up in a few moments and kind of give a high level summary of some of those adjustments that we did make to that draft since April 23rd. And then we are here today in an adoption meeting. So it is, it is ultimately up to this board here today to determine if this is a regulation in which we choose to implement within our county. If adopted, as you can see the timeline, we've been at this for some time, but for us as the Health Department, the work would really begin after today, right? So we would really have to step into what that looks like to spin a program up from scratch, providing services effective January 1st, 2026. So as mentioned, we've, we will have that in our budget for 2026 to include a staff, personnel and vehicle. And then just in conversation that we've had here today with some of those, with you all and participants, those departmental guidelines, that is really going to be critical and stepping into that pretty quickly so that we can begin to draft those guidelines, that pull from language of this regulation, but really put the regulation into practice then. And we would like to take steps of doing that to incorporate public-private partnership. Input is helpful here because we are not the private entities per se that are pumping these systems or the private businesses that are selling or transferring these properties. So we really want to get into that, promulgate rules, publish them. Those rules can be updated annually per the language within the regulation. You know, day one would be January of 26. January of 27, we would, we would make, this will be an improving process, right? So we're implementing something new. I would expect 27 looked better than 26 and so on and so forth as we build that. And those guidelines will really be kind of that playbook. So with that, Mr. Wheat did make a, a number of the edits to that draft, so I wanted to give him the opportunity to kind of speak on those.
Good morning, guys. Brent Wheat, Environmental Health Director, Grand Travers County. So we did make quite a few changes. We took all of the recommendations, all of the submitted things during that public hearing process and reviewed them to see if they were items that should be either added or revised in, in the regulation. So some of the big things that stood out was changing, you know, the term inspection to evaluation. And I think that makes sense. So, you know, what we do when we go out for a new septic system that's installed, we inspect that. But we're not really inspecting a septic system when it's in the ground, we're evaluating it. So, I mean, we've been looking at this thing for nine months, right? So what we think looks good, having those extra set of eyes is super helpful. So really shout out to Aspire North and Flo and the others who submitted documents. Also, we, we took some of the definitions and further added detail to help define and provide clarification so that when, you know, maybe an evaluation is denied or it's found to be a failure, it helps define why that, that we came to that, that decision. We looked at the proposed statewide code and their definition for failure and further commingled our regulation into that so that if, if the state does decide to move forward with a statewide septic code, we more align with their definition of failure as of right now. We further defined, we had no definition for sewage in there, you know? That was brought up multiple times in, in the recommendations that were submitted to us. So we defined sewage, you know, we, we further defined what a dwelling is. So it really, a lot of our changes were around just further defining clarification for when evaluations are done and reviews are, you know, decisions are made. Unless you guys have further questions about some of the revisions made, I think that's kind of it. The meat of the document is in that section, section 4B, that remains the same. None of that has changed. Evaluations will be done within, on any dwelling within 300 feet of surface water or any higher water marks.
Any questions? Commissioner Walter.
I had a question, a comment. I've heard from people across the spectrum of it's not going far enough or it's too, it's not enough. So I feel like when you hear from all sides and nobody's totally happy, we've hit a sweet spot. Because it's hard to do that, right? It's hard to find that balance. And it's not perfect, but I do feel like it has, this is really huge for our county to, to get to this point. And I'm happy to see the progress being made, really grateful for everybody who put the effort into it over the last nine months and more. No surprise that we're ahead of the state again, so happy about that. Also unhappy, but, so I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt the Grand Travers regulation for the evaluation of onsite water and sewage disposal systems at the time of property transfer to be effective January 1st, 2026.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Walter to accept as presented and seconded by Commissioner McAllister. Commissioner Nelson, add your hand up.
Yeah, I, I talked to Mr. Wheat, Mr. Leahy, and also we talked to Aspire North at the break. And I thought it was a good concern about if there is a violation where there's a need to be changed in this. And I'm comfortable with, with the Health Department's answer to this, that they're going to kind of work on. I don't want to change the wording in this motion on the fly. I think that's a bad way to do it. But they have committed to looking at language for if the director of the department or the department feels that that homeowner is doing, making best efforts to, to correct, take corrective actions, that they can, they can delay enforcement actions. I mean, we might be handing a $20,000 bill to somebody who has a $150,000 house. That, that isn't quick. And Eagle has a loan program for, for low income and also a regular loan program for anybody to get this done. But especially since this goes into effect in just a few months, if you were to start right now, you might not be able to get this corrected action taken even beforehand if you knew you had a violation. So I'm comfortable in talking, I thank those guys for talking to me. But with that caveat, I'm going to support this, but I just worry, we don't want to put an undue pressure on somebody that, and they, that there's must language in the, in the law that requires. So I'm assuming that we might have this come back in front of us after their approval and lawyer approval, that this board might possibly see some changes or maybe not. We might feel that the language is good, so.
Well, I agree with your sentiments, Commissioner Nelson. I think we're here to serve the people and to do what's the best for them, not to be tyrants and say, hey, your septic is failing, you can't pay for it, well, we're going to take it.
Yeah.
And that's the same thing when we're not paying for taxes. And I think this is fairly well addressed, but it's something definitely for, in the current schema, but I'd love, definitely keep an eye on that. That has to come back for our review. Any more comments? Commissioner McAllister? I'm sorry, are you finished?
I'm just going to point out the section that that's, that's on page eight.
Section 7C.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think, we think that sentence one of that, it says like if a health officer believes that they're violating. So it leaves a discretion up to, you know, the sanitarian who is reviewing that and working with that property owner to make that action. We're going to further look into that with our, our civil counsel to decide if, if that needs to be addressed or if that's, you know, gray enough to where, similar with our soil erosion ordinance, it, we're not out there to just find people every chance we get. We really are working with them, communicating with them to work towards solving the issue. So this is really more in lines for that, that group of people that are trying to skirt, skirt the regulation.
Thank you. Commissioner McAllister?
So I have two things. One is, did we get any paperwork from Benzie Lelandau or Long Lake to say, here, here's how we do it as far as what their rules and regs are, that kind of stuff?
Yep. So we worked with Dan Thorell, who is now the Health Officer for Benzie Lelandau. We, we met two or three times with Eric Johnston, who is their Environmental Health Director. So we've been working with them. They do it a little different. They do their inspections, the sanitarians do them themselves, the evaluations. We also work, Long Lake has been, at every single meeting, they've been at all, all of the ad hoc, so we've been in contact with them to do this whole process.
So we have a brokerage firm, Bowman Realty. We sold a house on Long Lake, beautiful. They make them get evaluated or inspected, but they, it wasn't through necessarily the township, they sent out Butch Straight. So they hire somebody out, Butch comes out and says, hey, you know, your, your septic has failed. But they made, you know, the owner had to do it, so the people buying the house had no idea whether it's failed, not failed and hadn't, didn't have to sign up for having it inspected as an incurred cost of purchasing. But as it turned out, the guy was, you know, he was old. I mean, he did two loads of laundry a week, two, whatever. So, so you wouldn't walk out there and say, the thing's bubbling up and leaking into the lake, you know, and it would happen to be on Long Lake. But they made them do that corrective thing, but at that time of the purchase also, you know, they had the purchase, they had money coming in, so they, they were able to make that, that adjustment or, you know, bring it up to code as, as it were. But had, had that not been the rules, they, they would have bought it. Who knows? You know, maybe it's a trash can down there with holes in it, who the heck knows? It was an old place, you know? But, but kudos, I know it's a lot of work. I was just wondering if you referenced some of their stuff, is all?
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. So the sanitarian notices a septic issue and they have 90 days to write up a citation to the property owner. And then a number two, there's monetary citations. But how long does the property owner have to address the citation? It looks like the sanitarian, the health officer may issue a citation within 90 days after there's, something's discovered. So then how long does the homeowner have to address that and how do they communicate that they're going to take care of it?
So those will be civil infractions, those will be issued by the police department. We do not have ticket books in our Health Department, so it would follow the county's ordinance as far as civil infractions.
And if this is the first time they're made aware of it, like I didn't know.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the corrective action, I mean, like I said, we really want to work with people. We are not out there to just be throwing tickets at, at people.
I understand, yeah.
We've been running the soil erosion department for seven, seven years now, I think. We have not issued a single civil infraction, even though our ordinance has that, the teeth in there. We really try and avoid that at all costs. So we leave it vague enough so that, you know, that communication channel can be out there to try and work towards the final goal of, of improving that septic system and getting it up to code.
Hopefully the, let's say you move on, hopefully the person who takes your position is just as nice and understanding. That's the only thing, like, I have these conversations about like similar things and it's really dependent upon like everybody having the same value system or someone's value system is different, maybe there's a way to make it really black and white. I don't want to belabor this, I want to move on. But I also like things to be clear in writing.
I think, I think Mr. Wheat undersells himself a bit too. Really the role of public health is to not rule with a heavy hand. It's, that's not a great recipe for success, right? So whether it's our Health Department, talking with Dan, Benzie Lelandau or our neighbors, that corrective action plan in those first 90 days is really where a lot of that corrective action plan in those first 90 days is really where a lot of this work is to be done. And to Commissioner McAllister's point, it's our role to identify, there are options within that plan as to who may address, right? Especially if it's a pending sale, motivated seller buyer. We are there to just help with the corrective action plan and work with that system, but ruling with a heavy hand, coming through with civil fines, we don't do a ton of that through the Health Department. And typically, Brent's team has, has had a long and laborious conversation with folks before that comes to my desk to be reviewed, so.
Thank you.
So, I'll just make the point that if someone's got a seep, you know, leaking septic tank or system, and they're, by definition, it's within 300 feet of water, and they are, you know, 90 days have gone, and lots of those conversations have happened, and maybe they're, for whatever reason, just not interested in solving this problem, I don't want an ordinance that has no teeth.
Right.
I, I trust your discretion, and I trust that, you know, you, you answer all, you know, eventually to us if, if you're abusing it, but I'm just going to make the point that this is there to protect public resources as well, and buyers as well as the sellers. I did want to ask, Mr. Miller raised the question about the guidelines, and I think some of the issues that he's raised can specifically be addressed potentially through the guidelines. And you mentioned, Mr. Leahy, I believe that you envision a public partnership, I'm not sure who said that. What, how do you envision that going? Is that a committee? Is that drafts out for review? How does Aspire North, Flow Watershed, and others get to see those before they're published?
I envision a committee being established through the local Health Department with invitation being sent to some of those partners that were members of ad hoc, and having a few renditions of that guideline first presented by the Health Department, hosting it at the Health Department in one of our, our meeting spaces, and work through that. I would like to, when we come to a final rendition, potentially present that to the Board, too, to, for you all to see what that looks like. I would like for that to be an encompassing group, because there are things that we may not be thinking as the Health Department, that Aspire, or Butch, and, and, you know, I, I need to hear those things, Brent needs to hear those things, but understanding that seven months is not that long of time. So, I really want to have it a proficient group so that we can draft language, and it is, you know, my position at the Health Department is that we're going to improve on this. I'm, I am asking for our team to have some grace and patience. 26 will look different than 27 and 28. It's okay if we identify things in 26 of, oops, we got to change that. And as long as we're addressing them as we go, I think we're operating in good faith.
I just want to make sure there's a public commitment, that there is going to be a public involvement in the process, and, and that you will be managing that. Relatedly, Connor raised the question about mapping, i- is that an equalization function? Is that something that's happening in, in, through your office? How do you anticipate solving that issue?
So, so as far as what Mr. Miller's talking, speaking upon is, like, mapping out, basically creating a buffer around all of the lakes and streams in Grand Travers County, that, you know, a 300-foot buffer, basically. I have spoke with Jim Baker, the Director, briefly, and we are going to work together as a team to try and create something so that we can at least identify as best we can, right? It's, it's not going to be a perfect system, but it'll at least give the bulk majority of the ones that are within that 300 feet, we should be able to generate a list of addresses.
I'm impressed with the level of ARC GIS data that is accessible through parcel search and otherwise, and it would be super awesome if Realtors could just go to a layer that says, yes, or, no, you're clear, so.
I mean, it should, it, it should get us at least 85% there, right? I mean, that, that's pretty good.
Pretty good for government.
Yeah.
And then my, my last question is, on the education component, we've got seven months to make sure we're successful on day one on this program. Will you present us with a, a public education or communication strategy? How do we get the word out so that people understand what this is? It's going to be a little confusing, but if you live in Long Lake, unless they repeal their ordinance, you are subject to one ordinance. If you live in, everywhere else, you're under a different ordinance. How do we iron those foreseeable wrinkles out? There are going to be unforeseeable wrinkles, but.
So, we do have a press release ready to go, either way, right? So, that would start today. We have an outreach coordinator at our Health Department that I would ask to take on some level of a public education and outreach campaign that will kind of grow in nature through the summer. And that would entail, you know, social media, I think, if, if adopted, I don't hate the idea of reposting it in the record eagle again, so just to let the public know, this is the language that has been adopted. We do have a role within our department that I would task with some of these functions, and we can present this board with kind of like a high level of summary of what that would entail. We do have some funds available through other grants that we can spend some money on that. I think the more we can do through the summer to prep us for that January 1, the benefit to us as a program and the community to just educate, and around those guidelines, too, holding maybe a public, a public house, or an open house at the Health Department with the regulation and guidelines, you know, shared with all members who sat in on that guidelines, yes.
Similar for the certification process. We're going to need certified inspectors by January 1, which is, obviously, you've got a timeline that you're working off that started yesterday or last year. But, thank you. I, I think just occasional updates to make, or, you know, I think we'll hear about it from Mr. Miller, he knows our number, if, if you're, if he doesn't feel like you're being inclusive, or, but, thank you.
Guaranteed. Thank you. So, we're going to have a motion on the floor to approve as presented. It was made by Commissioner Walter, I believe, and I forget who seconded it, my apologies.
Walter and McAllister.
Mr. McAllister.
Flynn.
This will be a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Walter?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
McAllister?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Seifer?
Yes. Motion passes. Gentlemen, you and all the people involved are to be commended. This is the way government's supposed to work. Hopefully, it continues on through in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the amount of times that we as public health can stand here in front of this board and talk public health, value that. Thank you to the public-private partnership. Connor's been great in terms of providing some, some feedback, and then thank you to Mr. Wheat. A lot of long nights spent between him and I discussing language. I could hear his eyes rolling sometimes when I come walking down the hallway for him, so I appreciate him and his team that's likely watching us back at the office, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Should we throw that gal a T-shirt? She's got to sign up. We should have the T-shirts, CT County Board. Thank you again. So, we're going to move on to 11 new business, 11A. If you remember, I added this to the agenda before we approved it for a Beta Board appointment. And so, a little quick backstory on this, I was appointed to the Beta, the Beta Board last cycle, last term, if you will. And then I became a Chair, and unfortunately, with the lawsuit between us and Beta, me being a Chair, I represent the county when we have all these little meetings that we do, talk about in closed session, and with attorneys involved. And unfortunately, it's created an adversarial relationship with myself, the Beta Board, and the Beta Board Executive Staff, or the Beta Executive Staff. And so, part of good government, nothing's going to change until we have a ruling or the lawsuit is dropped. So, part of being good government is to make sure that we're rerepresented and things move forward in a fashion that's sufficient and acceptable and serving the taxpayer. So, I'm going to step down as Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners representative on the Beta Board. In the process of doing that, I asked Commissioner Spence, who has quite a bit of public transit acumen in her repertoire, to fill my position, and she graciously accepted. So, I'm making the motion to appoint Commissioner Spence as the Grand Travers County Commissioner Representative on the Beta Board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to accept your?
Yeah, we have to vote on.
Oh, you're, is it a two-part? We accept your resignation and we accept?
Thank you.
Oh, my apologies, thank you for that. So, sure.
That should probably just be part of the motion.
Very great, as well as, let's amend the motion that I accept my resignation and the appointment of Commissioner Spence in my place. Thank you, Commissioner Walters, for that. Ready, Bonnie?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you, everyone, appreciate that. Now, move on to Commissioner Department reports.
My pleasure. Guest person.
Commissioner Morris.
Hey, yep, I'm down here.
You sure are.
Hey, you guys want to talk about Northern Lakes?
Yes, please.
Let's, let's talk.
Let's talk.
Okay, so.
I'm not making late, sir.
Single. Might not want to start. Anyway, so, at the last regular meeting, you requested that I, or that Northern Lakes have someone come here by the end of June to explain exactly what's going on financially. So, I went back to that board, and in the agenda-setting session, I actually had that put as an item on the agenda. And as you know, Mr. Martinez will be leaving at the end of June and will not be made available to us before that time. So, I did explain that, as a member of this board, you hold my feet to this, and you expect to have information flowing from me, and I cannot give information to you if I don't receive this information myself. So, we're in the works of trying to find an individual who will come to this board and give some updates. They may not be able to give all the answers at this time, but we expect some answers, and that's an ongoing process. The second thing that I would like to address is, if anyone bothered to either attend or view online the most recent meeting held in Houghton Lake last week, you would see that we have addressed an ongoing inquiry from a member of the public regarding our consumer appointee. Ms. Frost Anderson is one of the best board members we have ever had. However, she is a consumer, and because she is a consumer, we understand that she is struggling at times with her own mental health, and she has given me permission to say these things in an open forum. She asked for a leave of absence as a board member so that she may address the complex PTSD that she's experiencing. And, you know, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health is a trauma-informed organization, and I would expect that if a valued member asked us for a leave of absence to take care of our mental health, it would be very hypocritical for us to deny that opportunity for them to take care of themselves. So, I believe in the integrity of this Board of Commissioners, and I understand that this board would not be averse to allowing one of our members to take care of themselves. So, it would be hypocritical to either remove a member of CMH, or try to advocate for the removal of a board member who's trying to take care of their mental health. She's not coming to meetings to actually vote on items, but she is still engaged, and she's still helping with some projects that we'd already been working on. She's still a valued member, and so I feel protective of her because she's our board member, and she's a good member. But that's what's going on with that. And let's, speaking of consumers, our enabling agreement says that we must have five members on the, on the Northern Lakes Board who are either family members or direct consumers. Of those five, three need to be direct consumers. As far as I know, Grand Travers County is the only one who has honored that and has a consumer on our board. Recently, Waxford County appointed a member-at-large instead of appointing a consumer, knowing that we needed a consumer on the board. So, and, and in fact, I know this because I know that a consumer, a direct consumer, put in an application for that, and they still appointed someone else. And I have had conversations with people regarding this, and they knew, chose not to appoint a consumer. That is not my business. I don't know if the dispute resolution wants to take that up. Again, not really my business, but I'm a little frustrated.
Do you need us to adjust the motion we made last cycle when we specified that it be Mr. Martinez? Would we at least solve a small part of the problem if the motion, we, we said it's in the packet when we approved today's minutes or last whatever meeting, invite Brian Martinez, Interim Director, to the, a board meeting? It was very specific to him. If we say invite a representative with knowledge, is that a more helpful way for, I mean, I think we want the information, I don't know that we really care who presents it, I don't know.
It would certainly have more success.
Well, hopefully, we would.
Why is it Mr. Martinez is not going to be made available to us? Is that the Board's action?
He's leaving.
He's leaving at the end of the month, but before that, he has Uncle Sam duty.
Okay, right.
So.
It's not a lack of a desire to?
No, it's a, it's.
I wanted to make sure the Board didn't say, we're not making him available.
Yeah, no.
It's just his schedule, he can't come on either, none of our meetings. He's not able to come.
So, I think procedurally, and I'll, if, if our, this, uh, partitarian can correct us, do we want to amend? Do we need a new motion? What is, what is the process that we can, you know, substitute instead of saying Brian Martinez, a, a representative with knowledge from Northern Lakes?
Matt?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I would just recommend a motion to amend something previously adopted. So, a motion to amend the prior motion would be in order.
Okay. Then, since I made the motion last time, I'll make the motion to amend the motion approved at the May 7th meeting to invite a representative from Northern Lakes instead of specifying Mr. Martinez.
Are you going to say a member with knowledge? Or just anybody?
What's that?
Are you going to say a member with knowledge, or just anybody?
I mean, Penny is our, it could be Penny if she had information, it's just.
Somebody other than Commissioner Morris.
I think it has to be somebody, a staff person from CMH, I think is what we want.
That's why I was asking if it's.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair point.
Or a chair, the chair of CMH.
Someone who can address the.
What do you think, Penny?
I think a staff member would be appropriate.
Okay, a staff member from Northern Lakes. So, instead of Mr. Martinez, to say a staff person from.
Or maybe Mr. Martinez or.
Yeah, he may.
Because it would, you know, maybe he could find a time, or we create a special meeting when it works for him, I don't know.
So, the motion is to invite a staff person from Northern Lakes. I mean, if they send somebody, right, who has no knowledge, it's not going to go well, is my suspicion. Right? Like, if somebody comes here and they're like, well, I, I checked that box, I came, but, you know, I, I don't know, I got to look into it.
Yep. That's not going to.
That's not going to be really helpful for us.
Okay, second.
Thank you. So, a motion by Commissioner Andrews, seconded by Commissioner Walter to amend the previous.
May 7th.
May 7th motion to any staff member from Northern Lakes CMH.
A staff.
A staff member.
Martinez or a knowledgeable staff member.
Let's do that. Mr. Martinez or a knowledgeable staff member from Northern Lakes CMH to present to this board by the end of June. Ready? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
After the vote, I have a question.
Copy that. Commissioner Henchel, it passes.
Yeah, in, in the face of certain criticisms about our appointee, would it be helpful for this board to officially grant a leave of ab- a leave of absence as needed for mental health concerns?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners officially recognizes and grants a leave of absence as needed for mental health concerns for our appointee to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health.
Second. Should we put a...
Time limit?
Time frame on it, though?
Commissioner Morris, thoughts?
It's not stated here. Let's see. I believe to reduce stigma surrounding mental illness, we must be open and honest to normalize conversations about mental health. Therefore, I've outlined my own struggles and strongly believe that the consumer representative for this board, I must lead by example. Please see my attached request for a leave of absence. I didn't get the attachment. But I believe verbally, we said three months.
So, how friendly amendment?
Yeah.
To reevaluate, the board to reevaluate in 90 days?
Yes.
May add context just for your consideration.
Please.
So, the board attendance rule and the, and the agreement allows three absences per year, just for your information, for consideration.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There is precedence. We did have a board member who took a leave of absence for an entire year to fulfill another obligation without penalty, so...
Yeah, I'm just making sure that you guys have the context that you can do this and it's just a matter of...
90 days seems like an appropriate amount of time. If we need to talk more, a year seems like a long time where, you know, the point is well taken that maybe we're losing out on some perspective, but 90 days seems like a good...
So, do you care to restate your motion with the friendly amendment? Commissioner Anshel?
Yeah, sure. I move that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners officially recognizes and grants a leave of absence for 90 days to our appointee to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. Crystal Frost.
Yes.
I think it's helpful to give, just name her.
Yeah, Crystal Frost Anderson.
Yep, I think the original didn't, but that one did.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Flynn seconds. All those in favor, I'm sorry, any more discussion on that topic? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, but Penny raised a third issue, which was other boards or other counties have appointed people who don't seem to satisfy the consumer requirement. And I guess it's a question, does that, is that something that the dispute resolution committee can take up? Is there any recourse for any other board? I, I think the underlying issue on these two questions is the same, right? When you have a consumer, there's value to that. And there's also implications for that. But, having a non-consumer appointed in a seat that's specifically designated as a consumer seat seems to be a missing, I think, statutory requirement.
So, the enabling agreement states that the Northern Lakes Chair and the CEO are first to attempt to resolve the issue. The challenge that they're going to have is these are county appointees. So, if it remains unresolved, then any Chair of the Board or any administrator throughout the counties can raise the dispute.
Should we, is there anything we can do to encourage the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board to resolve this issue internally before we initiate a dispute process?
I, as Vice Chair, I suppose, could encourage the Chair to attempt to address this issue, seeing that we're losing our interim CEO shortly and there's a lot of moving parts happening. I'm not confident it's going to be resolved, but we can certainly give it a try.
Seems like a letter saying, "This is the requirement." This is, you know, even if it's from the attorney on behalf of CMH to a county saying, "Are you willing to reevaluate your appointee?" Or are you sure that they are meeting this requirement? Maybe they are, right?
Yeah, maybe they are in some way that...
A consumer that we don't know.
Well, I, I, I'm a big, as much as I share as much frustration with the process, it's been going on for years now and it still continues to happen. I think writing a letter is a little presumptuous at this point. Give them an opportunity at this changing of the guard and what have you. And let's see what happens in 30 days and then we'll go from there. That's my two cents.
I, I'm not encouraging us to write a letter. I was thinking that maybe Mr., the Chair of the CMH Board may be able to do something to move it along.
I...
I agree with you.
Yes.
I don't think there's anything necessary that we need to do today other than be supportive of that.
And I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Anybody else for any kind of departmental items or reports?
Copy at the county next Tuesday, right? Green Lake?
In Green Lake?
Nine o'clock?
There you go.
Be there, be square.
Oh, that reminds me. 22 to none is having a fundraiser between the Buckley Bar and the Kingsley Inn.
Tomorrow.
Any food bought after 4:00 PM at either location, part of the proceeds will go to 22 to none.
22% actually.
There you go. So, with shots with Scott, it might be in Buckley, it might be in Kingsley, but Thursday, you will see me at both locations.
It's a big deal.
It is a big deal. And my heart goes out to the people that made it happen. It's fantastic to watch partnerships between not only two businesses, but two businesses that are on, in two different counties. I think it's great.
Well, the only report that I have is we do have in your packet, a list of study sessions and unscheduled topics just as a way to track the various needs for meetings or discussions about these items. One thing that came to light at the agenda-setting hearing was this concept of the department reports that are going to be coming to you ahead of the budget process and during the budget process. And we're just wondering what, if any, how do you like to respond to these? As you heard earlier, we have 27 different departments or elected official, elected offices and just trying to schedule all of them is going to be challenging. And Lisa has done yeoman's work to get it kind of wrangled. But, looking at the board's preferences for what type of information would you like? Previously, we did a SWOT analysis. I think that was helpful. But, really, is that what this board wants to hear from our departments and elected officials?
In this conversation we had earlier, the agenda-setting, I put forth the idea that because there are 27 departments and we did put out the idea that budgeting is going to be at 2024 levels for the next year, that any department that was going to be outside of those guidelines or wanting to be outside of those guidelines, come forward in front of the board and provide a snapshot of what they do with, like, how many employees do they have? Why do you need to be outside those guidelines? Growth in people, growth in equipment, responsibilities as an idea, as opposed to, in my mind, I wouldn't think we'll have 27 departments saying, "Hey, we can't live within those guidelines." But, I mean, that's certainly a possibility. It puts us right back where we're at.
I mean, it's hard to say with inflation. I don't know what people are seeing and they're not getting grants. Maybe there's federal funding that's not coming through. There's a lot of unknowns, so it's possible. I don't know.
So, not necessarily whether we should hear every single department or which departments we should hear, but on the 11th, I see we've got Clerk, Treasurer, and Equalization. In my mind, instead of Equalization, it should be Register of Deeds. Equalization was here a couple, last, I think, last month or the month before. It's not an elected official. It doesn't seem to me to fit into that. And since we have, at least anecdotally, have some interest, some questions about Register of Deeds, operations and staffing and needs, it would be helpful to include that on the 11th instead of Equalization. At least, that's one piece of input. Others feel about that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And if you want to hear from the departments that you see fairly routinely, we are currently looking at the 28th, having a discussion with Admin, Finance, HR, and IT, as well as the Security Cameras discussion that Mr. Byrd and others have been working on through the Safety Committee. Just, is that, I can tell you all about Admin and how great we are, but you see us quite routinely. I'm not sure that we are hitting the mark there. I'm just trying to make sure that we're meeting your expectations.
I have a question about the Safety Committee and that. So, when we looked at some things last year, and this is one of the things we were talking about, didn't we add two people to that?
Safety Committee?
Or is that what one and done?
I don't think that there were, there was an addition because you wanted two Commissioners on that.
Right.
Correct. That's, has yet to be determined. Something that you was, you wish to do.
Well, because I know we met with the Safety Committee talking about things, concerns, and I've just, I'll do my diligence a little better. Thank you.
No, just ask. We can do it today if you'd like.
No.
I thought, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm doing this off the top of my head. I thought at the organizational meeting or the first regular meeting, you did appoint an ad hoc to discuss the security issues further with the safety team. That, that's my memory.
I believe that is accurate. I think 100%. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, that's separate. Thank you. Thank you for clearing it up for me.
Can you look, can Administration look into where that ad hoc landed? Sounds like it hasn't gotten together yet.
We haven't gotten together yet this year.
So, just to...
And that's my fault.
I appreciate that we obviously hear from HR, I mean, from Administration and we, you know, Dean is at every meeting. I, I think the question that, at least my vision or understanding of what we want to understand is not, you know, what is your recommendations on things? It's more like, how is your staffing plan? And how, how, do you think it's, it's good? Do you think it's insufficient? You know, we, last year at Budget, there was a brief, very brief discussion about finance needing another person and then we said, "Well, let's do that." And then, anyway, this is an opportunity to hear that, right? In a more...
Outside of, like, passing the budget?
Yep, yep. In a, just in a more, a less pressured environment. So, that's the kind of thing I think we want to hear, which is not the kind of thing we typically hear when you're physically present here. You know, what, are there some aspirational ideas for, you know, downsizing or upsizing or changing that we should hear about outside the budget context? And I, so, so whether you start with IT, Admin, and HR is up to you. I, I think the biggest chunks of staffing plan is probably, you know, as important as necessarily... I don't know how you want to, like, prioritize. I don't know how much time I want to spend with a department that has, I don't know, four people, you know what I mean? As opposed to a Board of Public Works has 12 people. You, I think there should be some ranking of relative...
Some prioritization would be good.
Prioritization, thank you.
So, Chairman Sefer...
That's it? You're dropping that bomb and sitting back?
What was the question?
I didn't have a question.
Oh, I thought somebody had a question.
He was going to say something.
The Chairman, he made a reference a few moments ago about level-setting our budget back to the 2024 amended budget, our, which is $49.1 million. We will be sharing with you very soon the personnel cost projections for 2026. And you're going to, so you will know at that meeting, we've told the departments and elected officials that we want a $49.1 million budget. Your personnel costs are here and you'll see what you have to work with in terms of flexibility between the two numbers. I've not heard a lot back from elected officials or department heads about that mandate or the request. And I guess it was a request. It wasn't a requirement. But, we, we think we have the ability to do it and the whole purpose there is to level-set so we can start looking at potential debt service.
For the folks at home, that means pay for stuff what we want to build. It's very expensive.
You say 41.9?
49.1.
You got to come to the microphone. People can't hear you.
Can we make it 41.9? Just kidding, just kidding.
No, I don't think we can go that deep. And lastly, I am at the MAC Administrative Offices Conference this week, meeting with upwards of 50 different administrators, so I'm looking forward to that.
Good. Two beds and not bitter water for golfing.
Tell me about it.
Beautiful golf course. All right, any more reports? So, we kind of, we're down to second public comment. Anybody want to make a comment? Just please go ahead to the podium.
My name is Justin Reed. I'd like to thank the County Commission to, to highlighting the issue with the bylaws with Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Association. I am saying that, you know, it doesn't matter about the, about them being there voting. It matters about merit and character and accountability. And, you know, when the County Commission is asking about who they want from the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health being here, yes, staff is important to be here to ask that question about what's going on with Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. However, there's appointees that are there that should be here also mentioning about what's happening with Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. Last Board of Directors meeting, there was somebody from Roscommon County who was saying that they're having issues with their Board of Commissioners because their board is asking them what's going on. So, I would be very, I guess, remissive if there was nobody who was an appointee from Northern Lakes to explain what's happening. So, and, you know, talking about how positive things with Northern Lakes, there's no, there's, there's nobody who's saying anything positive about all the work that is being done at all. You know, I'll say something that's, that's one positive thing that has came out of the Board of Directors meeting is that the RAC has actually got a Clubhouse member who's been appointed to that position. And also, I, I, I'm hoping that, you know, that, that this person, Crystal Frost Anderson, hopefully, she can get through her trauma. Because, you know, you have to have a helping hand with people who have trauma. And, you know, kicking them down when they're, when they're down is just not good at all. However, I do want to say that whenever you do an ad hoc interview process for appointee, is that it's said that they have a position to uphold. And they're asked that question of, are they able to, they understand that this is a appointment that is something that has to be attentioned and also, you know, being present. So, I'm going to also say that the Finance Committee for the, for the Board of Directors, they did not present anything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Last on the stage, sorry to keep you so long. I just have a quick announcement.
Name, please?
Oh, Richard Robbins from the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. As you know, Smart Commute Week's coming up and the Board, the County Board meeting is on the 4th. You too can smart commute to this board meeting and have a free breakfast. So, I'd encourage you to do that. But, the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance is having its first actual event on the 3rd, Tuesday, the 3rd. It starts at the library on Widmer from 4:30 to 6:00. What we're doing is, we have invited all of the bike shops as well as Traverse City Power and Light will have their tent to talk about e-rebates and also some really cool new e-technology that is going to be displayed. Cargo bikes, all sorts of different e-technology from the Sleeping Bear National Park. They're bringing the wheelchair e-bike, which is to show that off. The reason that is important is I think that the county and our society has got to recognize that e-technology is going to transform our transportation infrastructure and the needs for different transportation infrastructure. Because low and moderate income people are, are ditching the automobile and they're moving to, to e-technology. E-bikes and all sorts of new technology that are going to be developed. That being the case, we as a county and as a society need to be looking at the future as to how we, how we think about our infrastructure for, for non-automotive transportation. So, that being the case, love to invite you to that. It's from 4:30 to 6:00. And then, from 6:00 to 8:00, we have a session at the library to talk about the, what's the future of the Grand Traverse area's multimodal infrastructure? And so, we have a professional engineer that has national recognition in these types of implementations around the country. We've got the disabled. We have bicyclists. We have runners that are all there to talk about,[1775.74] about, on the panel to talk about how we as a county and as a, as a region need to start thinking about multimodal transportation, not just automotive. So that's from 6:00 to 8:00, and there will be open discussion with, with the audience as well. So I look forward to seeing you there, hopefully, and, and/or bring your e-bike or whatever you commute with to the, to the Bike Corral, which is at, from 4:30 to 6:00, because everyone's going to be showing that off as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comment?
Me.
Okay.
Bonnie Shealy County Clerk. 1999, 26 years ago, the first floor was remodeled, and it hasn't been upgraded since. The second and third floors have been remodeled a couple of times in the 26 years. The city decided a couple of years ago to remodel their side. New carpet, new, new furniture. Equalization probably got new carpet about 15 years ago. County side, the elected officials, nothing. We have carpet that has holes, snags, stains. We have furniture that is falling apart that doesn't even have replacement pieces anymore. Our electrical is very insufficient. 1999, they didn't know we were going to have all these computers and printers and fax machines or, I mean, scanners. So we are using surge protectors down there. Not really a good idea. We were, we were scheduled to have upgrades this year, and I was told last week that it's been put on hold. I, I think it was over budget. But I encourage you to maybe think about moving forward with the upgrades on the first floor. We're going to be here for years. We're not leaving for a long time, especially the elected officials. Even if you found another place for us to move in the city, once you move these departments out, we're still going to be here for a few years, because I know how slow government works. I mean, it's going to take two years just to do Alpha, that Project Alpha. So I, I just want to encourage you, this is the first floor that everybody sees. More people see the first floor than they see any other floor in this building. And I could care less about a bathroom even, since we don't have one. I'd rather just get some new carpet, some upgrades to the furniture. It's very, very important. So, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you.
My three minutes.
Did very well.
Thank you.
Set the bar very high.
It's kind of nerve wracking up there. I'd rather say it from here.
Can be, for sure. Anyone else?
Does administration have an update from facilities? It sounds like it was over budget, but there were, there were updates budgeted, but came back way over budget, or do we know?
It was significantly over. I think the number was 75,000 more than budgeted. And it's not only the budget, it's the fact that we are currently finally having this conversation with the city, and in the event that we're going to stay here, that tells us what we're going to do. If we are going to spend that type of money, then I think we just, we need to either do it or not. And to Bonnie's point, any construction of a different governmental center, which is something that we could conceive of, it's going to be three to five years. So we're just trying to balance those decisions on not only cost, but on the cadence of changes that we're going to see through the FMP.
Well, we budgeted $100,000. It came in at $175,000 to re-carpet the half of that first floor?
It's not just carpet.
It's the furniture.
Electrical.
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 So, so was that all in, did we under budget when we said 100,000? Because the budget says first floor remodel, clerk, treasurer, register of deeds, governmental center, replace carpet and office furniture, 100,000. That's in our CIP that we approved last year.
They'll just get more expensive.
Yeah.
Is there, are there areas where we've seen some savings in other capital improvement plans? It seems like there was something that came in 75 under recently. I can't remember.
We received, I'll have to confirm with John. I don't want to make comments outside of having that understanding, but there were some savings, I believe, at the, at the Howe Arena for the roof replacement. We received a grant for something at the LAC, and, but I also know the chiller was more expensive than we had contemplated.
Let's, I'm going to suggest that get with John and come back with some numbers at our next full board meeting.
Sounds like this is a priority for an elected official. We should take it.
Seriously.
Seriously.
Especially since we talked about it last year as a budgeted item, and we all know it's.
And it's only the elected.
I don't think we need a motion.
It's only the elected officials that have not been upgraded in this whole building.
If they work for the city.
I know.
We'll bring back to you next meeting.
Thank you. Anything else?
Bring your pencil sharpener.
All right. Pocket protector. Well, if there's nothing else, I'm going to, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful day. Enjoy your holiday weekend, safe travels.